...two thousand and eleven. I just want to point out for everyone here, in case we have an emergency and need to evacuate the room, for whatever reason. There are two exits to this room. They're on the right-hand side of the audience, the front and the back. We do have to evacuate. We ask you to proceed through the exit that's closest to you. Go outside, move away from the building, don't come back in, too. Our fire officials have instructed everyone to do so. I ask everyone to please rise, we'll pledge allegiance to our American flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our meeting is divided into two parts. The first part is administrative board work, where we got our work done. And this being the second Wednesday of the month, we have our second part as the public hearings, workshops, and conceptual discussions. Let's see, Chuck is absent tonight. Far as I know, Mary's coming. I'll appoint Dana to vote for Chuck. And we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight voting members bec- okay, we should have nine. No, it'll be nine when Mary comes. So I'll appoint Letha to vote for Mary until she comes. And we'll have a full complement of nine that way. Okay, we'll go to administrative board work. We have a reinstatement request, and this is Crowell's Corner Site Plan, map 12, lot number sixty-eight.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your packet you'll find a letter from Chris Paul from Crowell's Corner Property Management requesting a reinstatement of the site plan that had expired last year. Also attached to that letter, you'll find meeting notes from a meeting that John and I had with Richard Canuel and Mr. Paul. At that meeting, we suggested to Mr. Paul that in order for the planning board to consider reinstating the plan, they would need to post the sixteen thousand dollar restoration surety, the thirty-four hundred dollar site inspection escrow. Prepare the letter, address to the planning board requesting reinstatement of the site plan with justification and realistic commitment to complete all the required site work and inspections. And then finally, that the planning board would then be able to meet and consider the request. Mr. Paul is here in the audience tonight, and I'm sure if you have any particular questions, he can address them.
Okay, we've had any changes, I don't think we have any changes since, you know...
The plan itself would still comply with the ordinances and regulations that are in play to today's date.
I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Okay. Okay, let the record note that Tom Freida's recused himself. Chris, why don't you come down here? Maybe give us an overview of the situation and everything, and answer any questions that the board might have. Just name an address.
Owner of Tulage Field, 118 Hotty Road. I mean, Tim basically covered it. I mean, he told me what I needed to do to get the plan reinstated, so I moved forward with that. I mean, I've met with Tim, I've met with Richard several times. We've walked through the property, at least Richard and I, also the fire inspector. So I know pretty much, or I know exactly what they need me to do inside. I've accomplished a couple of the things that Richard asked me to do. I'm going to have the fire system installed, probably within the next month, if we move forward with the site plan reinstatement. And then I'll have to go forward with the paving of the parking lot. And really, that's it. There's some landscaping that needs to be done, aside from that.
One other note that John did remind me of, the DOT driveway permit for this has expired, that will need to be renewed by the applicant.
Which I did do. I contacted the state, and they showed me that, you know, all they needed was a letter from me, which I sent out. And you guys should be getting a new stamped letter, probably within the next week, I would think.
Okay, so basically, this is an approved site plan that has expired.
This is an expired site plan, correct.
And I guess, let's say if we did reinstate it, the only thing that would be required is that you meet all the conditions of the site plan, which is stipulated right here.
It's the construction as per the plan itself, as well as the inspections and any improvements needed within the building. The other part of that, prior to occupancy, would also be the payment of the three impact fees for traffic, police, and fire.
Yeah. So basically, after this, it's just the administrative to get everything, make sure everything gets done. You wouldn't need to do anything further here.
The restoration surety and site inspection escrow, that's been...
I have the checks in hand, I have not put them with the finance department pending the results of tonight's meeting.
Okay, any questions on the board? Okay, I'll start down this end, I'll just go right through. I'll start with John.
Why was the plan expired, in the first place?
It expired in June of two thousand and ten, and then there was the court issue that had gone on from that point forward.
That's resolved?
That had been, it was appealed to Supreme Court and withdrawn by Mr. Paul.
So the town's decision, I mean, the town was successful in upholding it. Anything else? Okay, Letha?
And um, the understand staff has no issues, then?
Again, at this point, given the history of the project, it's really, it's a discretionary decision of the board as to whether or not you feel it's appropriate to address and reinstate the plan. From a, again, from a regulatory perspective, there has not been any changes that would impact the viability of the plan, should you reinstate it.
Mr. Paul indicated he's renewing that driveway permit, so...
Thank you.
One note is, it's Zone C3 at this point. I can't do anything with the property if I don't move forward with this, other than go to zoning and get it, get some sort of a variance to allow me to at least rent it to somebody.
Okay.
So I mean, it's basically abandoned right now.
Laura?
I don't have any questions, please.
No questions, I support the reinstatement.
Mary?
I support the reinstatement, too, but I thought it reverted back to AR1.
It did. The zoning, once the plan was signed by the board, back in, I believe it was two thousand and nine, when it was originally signed by the board, that's what triggered the actual change of the zoning, based on the decision of the council. It was effective upon final approval, which was granted by the board a couple of years ago.
So as long as all the conditions are met, I don't have any problems with it.
Dana?
I'm in favor of the reinstatement. I'm just concerned that it will be completed this time, and we won't be going down the same path we went down previously.
Well, I can't get into the building until I do get it accomplished, so I mean, it's, you know, in my best interest, I don't want to keep paying two rents.
There is no occupancy in the building currently.
Okay. Chris?
All set.
Okay. All I need is a motion for reinstatement.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, a motion for reinstatement by Dana, second by Mary. Any further discussion by the board?
Just a note that, per regulatory requirements, that reinstatement would now be valid from one year from today's date.
Okay, so noted as part of that motion. Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Since the chair was affirmative, and it's reinstated, and let the record note that Tom Freida had recused himself from this item.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Chairman, Mary had taken her vote, then?
Yes, yeah. Because Mary is voting, so Letha didn't vote on this. Okay. Next item is selection of planning board representative for the master plan steering committee. And I told everyone to send to Tim, and Letha had sent a request to me, I sent to Tim also. And I guess you have compiled what we have.
I've compiled the one response I got from the planning board, yes.
Okay. That makes life rather easy, then. So I guess you're the representative on the master plan steering.
Unless there are any objections, but I feel I can honorably and effectively represent the board.
Well, thank you for volunteering.
Appreciate it.
The board may just select an alternate, just in case, but it would not have an official position, but I do think it might be helpful if there was an alternate assigned as well.
I would be happy to be there.
Nominate Dana.
Okay, Mary...
I decline.
Mary's willing to be the alternate representative to, this is the town master plan, this is not the Woodmont master plan, so make that distinction. So Mary is the backup.
Just to give the board a bit of an update on where we're at, we currently have received feedback from, LHRA has selected a representative of the zoning board of adjustment, and the budget committee as well. I'm expecting the heritage commission will do so at their meeting later this month.
The twenty-sixth.
Still waiting for the town council, the school board, conservation commission, and a couple others. And at our June first meeting, we will be interviewing those people that have expressed interest in the at-large positions. Right now, I've received four interested people in those positions.
It did come up last night in the, at the school board. I haven't done the minutes, I don't remember, but do you know?
It was me.
It was John, so that works.
If you could get Nate to send me an email, just confirming that, I can put it together.
Be in the official minutes tomorrow, or the unofficial.
Okay, we'll get that done. Next item is regional impact determinations, and...
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your packet you'll find memo dated tonight. We have subdivision and a site plan, both of which we need a determination on. The first is for 124 to 126 Rockingham Road LLC, map sixteen lots seventy-two and seventy-four. This is a design review application for a construction of a gas station, convenience store, and drive-through donut shop. This is a project that had previously been submitted under a different applicant for a very similar use, but was eventually withdrawn. This is a new applicant looking to move forward with development of the two parcels. We recommend that this is not a development of regional impact, as it does not meet the guidelines from the Regional Planning Commission. The subdivision is for map three, lot 138-1, so a proposed two-lot subdivision. Again, submitted for design review. Again, staff would recommend that this is not a project of regional impact, as it does not meet the guidelines from the Regional Planning Commission.
Okay, I'll take a motion that these two items, tax map sixteen lots seventy-two and seventy-four, which is for site plan, and then tax map three lots 138-1, which is a two-lot subdivision.
The motion can simply accept the staff recommendation.
Okay.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion by Dana.
Second.
Second by Lynn. And any discussion? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Since the chair was affirmative, and those two items are not of regional impact. Okay, discussions of town staff, I'll start with Andre.
I have nothing here, though. I'll be denied, unfortunately.
Hey, things are quiet.
Yes.
Relatively quiet. Anything, John?
All set.
Okay, Tim?
Just a quick note to thank everybody who was involved in the Apple Blossom Autism Walk on May first. It was a very successful endeavor, we had over sixty walkers. And if you indulge me for a second, we also had, the Dairy News photographer actually happened to snap a picture of my son, which is up on the screen there during the walk. It was a very nice afternoon, pleasant day, not too warm. We thank those that donated in support of the walk, and hopefully we'll be able to do it again next year.
Well, you guys have the same hair style?
Yeah, we do, all three of them. My other son's here.
Nice photo. At least that was before the black flies really hit.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Outside of that, I don't have anything else tonight.
Okay, I have the board. Lynn?
One thing I'd like to say, the open space task force has a meeting in this room on Wednesday, May twenty-fifth, to solicit input from the public on the open space. Any issues with open space, any ideas on open space?
Yes, please, please come. Actually, from the survey, we've got a lot of good input.
A lot of good input. The board's done a lot of good, or the task force has done a lot of good work so far, and we're getting into the meat of it right now, so, you know, now's when we really need some input from the public.
When do you have to have your results?
We're shooting for July, by having our results into the town council.
Great.
Yes, I'll give a report, a presentation to the town council. Okay, we'll move to our, to our meeting this year. We have a workshop, and this is with Woodmont Commons. It's a conceptual discussion about the PUD master plan. It's a conceptual discussion, there's nothing binding, and there's free discussion of ideas back and forth. We'll hear the presentation, and then, if there's any questions and answers from the public, I will go to the public. And then we will deal with, we also have a list of questions, and I haven't seen Jack Felby here, because I don't want Jack around in case to clarify what's being asked, because some of it was a little confusing, I guess, at best, so.
You're on the floor, gentlemen, and...
For the record, my name is Michael Kettenbach, I'm with Pillsbury, I'm the proponent for the project. I'm here tonight with Rick Chilman and John to present the W's tonight. We've made sure that staff had plenty of time to comment and to look at it, we made sure that it was available so that you all could have it for the weekend. We've handed out paper handouts tonight, so that everybody can follow through, very easily. And we've also provided tonight for the...
I think this, so far, for the public also...
Yes, we also have parties up here for the public that wants to follow along.
And I took one on the weekend, so this is an extra, if anybody wants it. So I have one...
Yeah, pass it over here.
We also provided a worksheet. It's an overview summary of the sheets, in more of a written language, that corresponds to the map plans that you have, make it easier to follow along. Delineates everything in a written format as we go through it. Looking for, you're going to be looking for our input, and we're going to be looking for your input, and hopefully we can get through the majority of this, if not all of it tonight.
I'm looking for an interactive session, this is what conceptual discussions are.
Absolutely.
This is actually our seventh meeting, so...
Yes, I know. Also, there's been, in my opinion, a tremendous amount of misinformation in the last couple of months on this, on this project, and I wanted to address just a few of the issues. One of the most prominent ones on the misinformation is there's a thing floating around saying there's going to be thirty-six hundred units on this property. We've never, ever promulgated any number like that. The only number that we've ever promulgated is thirteen hundred, we've been very consistent with that. The only direction we were looking from for the board is whether the board wanted workforce housing and elderly housing as a component of the project, and how many units of that they would like to see. And that's where we've been at consistently, since the inception of this project. One of the other issues that's come up is another, I think, misstatement, that there's going to be twenty-six hundred schoolchildren, based on this project, and everybody from the, from the school officials to the town officials have said that the impact at its most would be six hundred, based on what we've presented to date. And so I wanted to lay that to bed. I don't like that kind of gross inaccuracy floating around. We just haven't done that. We've tried to be as straightforward and as honest with the board and the community as we can be, and then having our workshops even as early as this Saturday. Another issue that's been floated out there was, was an issue of whether we would deal with this in one-hundred-acre things. I can't possibly begin to tell you all the issues that would be involved in having to go and do this in hundred-acre increments, based on how we endeavored to put this plan together and the mix that we do to make this a viable project. Suffice to say, your PUD invited me to make a proposal. I've made that proposal for the six hundred-plus acres, and that's why I'm here tonight. I've relied on it, I've spent millions of dollars on it, and I'm here tonight in that regard. So I just wanted to put those things out there, and so that people could understand where we're coming from, and that we've been very consistent with this throughout the process, and I would hope that that would continue, because I know it will continue on our end to be a straightforward process, and open and transparent. Thank you.
Okay, and the Thursday evening and Saturday morning sessions, continue?
Continue.
Okay.
There's no reason to not have them, because input's still good, we still have traffic, we still have a lot of different things we need to go through. We also need to work on the written component of the project, and those will have to come at subsequent meetings, and that's why we will continue to have the input from everybody, and from you all, and from the community at these work sessions, because we've found them to be very valuable to narrow the range and the focus of what we're here, even tonight. So I just, again, find them extremely useful, and find that it's been a great project and a lot of fun to work with, and meeting new people at every juncture, and it's been, it's been a lot of fun for us as well. So I just, I pass that on tonight. I'm going to really kind of turn the meeting over to John and to Rick. I'm here for comment, and answers, and questions, and we'll just all be up here on the dais, and we'll have at it right now, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, Mary.
Mr. Kettenbach, it's at the thirteen hundred, I want to further clarify that, the thirteen hundred number, because I'm getting emails that are saying, you know, thirty-six hundred and twenty-six, and I agree with you, I mean, and I have been consistently saying the same thing, I believe, that you're saying.
Yes.
But in some of the meetings, I've heard things like, unless you want us to put more elderly, you know, add more houses, meaning elderly or affordable housing. So when you mention those two things, are you saying that those would be a component of the proposed thirteen hundred, or in addition to the proposed thirteen hundred?
We've always stated that it's in addition.
Okay, that's what I thought, too.
And that's what I, I think I've been fairly consistent in that, and I appreciate your understanding of that.
So, so the way you have this structured, in one section, you've also explained this, and I thought very clearly, in one section, if you build six hundred single-family homes, which you're not going to, but if you did, then you'd only have seven hundred whatever dwellings someplace else in this project.
That's correct.
Okay. But if we chose that there was room somewhere for you to have apartments, but then also some affordable housing, and maybe some elderly, or something like that, it might make the density a little bit higher in some of the, some of the proposed things, but then you'd have the additional other things.
And it's up to you to tell us where, really and truly, because...
If any.
If any.
If any.
If any. It's a choice.
But you would be satisfied if we just said, we only want thirteen hundred, that's it, don't build anymore?
That's correct.
And if it says that on the plan, regardless of how many units, when you add them all together, the master plan says a maximum of thirteen hundred units, that's what it is.
That's what it is.
And that would also be something staff would require and recommend, that the planning board ensures written into the written portion of the master plan as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
In fact, I did have an email today, from Mary Tatro. I don't know if Jack Felby or not, but full of planning board, you know, it was a request for workforce housing. That was the first one I've had for workforce housing. I've had other requests for fifty-five older type of things, but I think it's something the board will have to wrestle with on what, one of the, the aging population of town, I guess.
In that vein, Mr. Chairman, we were, we've been approached by people who work in the service portion of the community, your fire, police, teachers, things like that, that were extremely interested in workforce housing, so that those individuals could live in the community and not on the outside of the community. And they thought it would be great if something was available in that regard for people who service the community to live in the community, because they found that it's very hard for them to buy real estate, or a home, or an apartment in the community, and in that regard, I think that would be a very useful component to the project, but again, not necessary.
Okay, well, I guess the question would be then, why wouldn't you envision that to be one of, or some part of that thirteen hundred number that you already have?
As we, as we stand right now, Mary, the thirteen hundred units are a component of trying to make a good balance for the project. The maximum, if you take all the acreage, it's less than two, two units per acre. Another thing that's been out there in this regard is that we're going to build six homes to the acre. Well, nothing could be further from the truth. The average density is less than two units, and, and when you go to an apartment building, for instance, they're usually twelve to the acre, or more. So density is based on how we view it, and how we describe it, and how we implement it into this plan, so, but I think it's an integral part of the plan, if the community so desires. I'm sticking to my guns on the thirteen hundred, because I think that I'd like to see residential component to this, because it is a live-work-play aspect, and we always envisioned that there might be more density for workforce housing, but we don't make money on workforce housing, and therefore, we left it to the board to determine what that number's going to be. That's absolutely a lost leader, or a break-even.
That said, just technically, because I know some of the changes that have been made to the plan since the last few meetings, as the perimeter has gotten more dedicated to being, matching the adjacent properties, which it now does, there will undoubtedly be some rental housing inside the village part of the project that could qualify as, you know, workforce housing. Maybe not to own, but maybe to rent.
I don't, I don't rule out having workforce housing as housing either, for single-family dwellings as well. It's just a matter of the mix, again. And I think it's, I think it's an important component to the plan, so...
Yeah, because actually, this community has a workforce housing ordinance, and what that allows is up to eight units per acre. So let's say if someone has, you know, sizable acreage, or even this property...
Ten units.
Ten units, okay. Eight for multifamily, ten for workforce. So let's say if the whole thing came out of workforce housing, you could put up to ten units per acre on that property.
Yes, so, I don't think we're, we've never anticipated having anything quite that grand. We've never envisioned having anything quite that grandiose, so...
Thanks, Tim.
I don't think we're overbuilt in any way, shape, or form. I guess it's my basic parameter.
Andre?
Actually, Mary kind of went down the path, but I just wanted to make sure we clarify with regard to the thirteen hundred acres. If I understand, your question was that could the senior housing and affordable housing be included in the thirteen hundred units? And what I'm kind of hearing is that some of the rental could be included as affordable housing, and given the median income for affordable housing in London Dairy, I wouldn't be surprised that a lot of this wouldn't qualify as affordable housing, which is, I believe, the latest...
I think the point is thirteen hundred market rate units. You know, that's what Mr. Kettenbach has based his plans on. And what I'm saying is that in that market is some rental units. Those are, you know, investment units.
Some would be market rental.
Right.
But if we need workforce housing, it should be a combination of residential, and it should be interspersed throughout the project, and it should be some apartments, some townhouse, some, some single-family residential. And that's, and the onus is, is when we come before you in the future, on the phases, is how do we integrate that in there, and where's it going to be? And we determine that through the W's currently, and then, and then we, and then we come back to you, and we go through, well, is this the right place for it? Is this the right location? Can we integrate it? Can people, you know, in varying economic levels, live near each other, and things like that? I think that, I think we can make a reasonable presentation, and a successful presentation to the board, that it is easy to integrate it into, into a master plan, and into zoning, and into the actual lifestyle of the community, without, without any negative effects.
And what we could do, John has put together this document for tonight, that I think can help advance this project, in a very useful way. We can add the elderly and affordable workforce housing component to a discussion of, on the map that is up on the screen. Since the last time we met with you, working with staff, we've refined the so-called W areas into much more of a rich variety of locations. And we might say, for example, that W28 along Gilcrest Road may or may not be an appropriate location for this or that type of housing. W21 in the heart of the village probably could accommodate a very wide variety of housing types. So if we...
Yeah, that's what we kind of discussed before, along the periphery is, you know, like one...
Matching.
Yeah, matching, you know, the apple trees, one-acre housing.
Correct.
Then the density starts to build, and it's most concentrated in quote-unquote village district, I guess.
Exactly.
So...
Four, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
On Saturday, when we saw this for the first time, because this is an updated thing, W212 is completely commercial, and I appreciate that's, this one, is if 4A West goes in, but there is residential there, and if we're matching them, this is not an accurate depiction.
The most recent change, as of this evening, is that even W212 will stay primarily residential until and unless exit 4A West becomes a reality. So we're going to simplify the application. Every reference to 4A West happening is going to come out of the application at this point. We're going to just keep it as 4A East is happening, it's going to be as is on the screen now. So a little small, commercial, little tiny piece here around the screen, or something like that, which is described in this note, but all this will be residential until and unless this connection happens.
Mary, just in the discussions we've had with the applicants at the staff level...
Mary, just in the discussions we've had with the applicants at the staff level, what we were told at the beginning of the week was that rather than presenting the two alternatives with an exit four A West being a possibility or not, the application, when it is filed, will now come in with, just as you see here on the map today, that it being primarily residential, and should exit four A West happen at some point in the future, they would have to come back to the planning board to amend the PUD at that time to accommodate any changes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Name an address.
John Michaels, eleven Nutfield Drive in Londonderry. I think what sort of would be helpful to, to all of us, I put together these sheets which you have, and based on comments we had, some, some people relate well to an image here, some relate well, but some say, you know, I gotta, I gotta read it. So what we're, we're trying to have before you is something in a number of different forms so that you can understand what we're doing. And what we'd like to do is walk through the Ws, and with the idea that this is what we're proposing, we'd like to know, you know, if this is all right. And remember, what we're doing now is this isn't the concept stage. We are, after this point, let's suppose you said W two-one, the way we have it there tonight is, is fine. When we get to the written portion of the, of the PUD master plan, one of the things which has come up is that the definitions of some of the uses in the town, some definitions, they're very clear, some they aren't defined. And so in the written portion, if there is something that is not defined, we will come up with a definition, and we will be listing all the definitions of every use. This is a use, this is a definition, so that there's no question as to what is allowed or not and what is meant by this particular use. The other thing we're going to do in the written portion, which we don't have on these sheets, but understand that that's gonna come in a written portion, if, and use an example that's been brought up a number of times, if in the W two-one section, which is our village, people have said, yeah, we probably should have car rental, but we don't wanna have the airport-sized car rental. So what we would do in the written portion then is, when we go and say, car rental isn't allowed use, we would come in and we'd put a limit on it, that it can't be more than twenty cars or a number like that. So some, one of the comments that comes is depending on different sections of the property, in some of them, people don't seem to care about the size, but in others, particularly in the village, the size and scope is very appropriate. So, a thing that will be coming after this, if, if we approve two-one today, remember there's a second step. And the second step will be, in the written portion, we will have further definitions of every one of those allowed uses, and a number of them will be limited in the, in the scope.
Scope and scale, you know, it's, we're, it's not a trick, you know, we don't wanna have Raytheon in the heart of the village, but you might have an assembly process going on in something the size of a house. You know, there are uses like that today. So, I think if we can focus on John's list with the understanding that scope and scale will be taken care of later, we can hopefully make some good progress. Because this is, this is actually the zoning map, the refined zoning map for this project. I think, Tim, would you agree with?
That's what it would ultimately become, yes.
Except for W two-twelve, right? Doesn't that mean...
That would still, it would still have its own section, if that's how it's proposed, but the uses...
The text is gonna change now.
The text will be, the text would change appropriately based on what they're proposing.
I know, but in the color coding, what is that color coding?
The color doesn't mean anything. It's just to differentiate between the different areas. That's, I think, all it really is intended to be.
It's just like crosshash to something for future, something like, I think it's confusing right now with it there.
I think at this point, the colors are irrelevant. It's, it's a matter of what the text and those areas are actually representing. When we get to the point of getting more towards a final submission, we'll obviously look at making sure that different zones that have similar will have similar color schemes. But at this point, I think, based on a conceptual basis.
So the colors are not related on this?
No.
Should we see that?
To differentiate the individual areas that we're trying to define under this document.
Actually, the, the only color that is referenced specifically in the written portion is yellow. It doesn't look very yellow, but it's on the perimeter. And in, in keeping with the current change and Mary's comment, the yellow should probably continue through W two-thirteen. So yes, Mary, that will change.
So, with sort of an overview of what we're, we're doing, the major, there are two or three heavily, heavy-use areas in the master plan. One of the, the major one is W two-one. This is the village center. That is gonna be the area that, you know, we're gonna have business goods and services center, and we're gonna provide housing. This is gonna be very mixed-use. You know, we're gonna have on-street parking, there'll be parking lots, we're gonna try to accommodate all sorts of different transportation. And what this is, if you, we're having up to five-hundred-and-forty-five units. So, getting back to Mary's comment earlier, we have a total of thirteen, we're allowed five-forty-five here. Now, we may decide...
You subtract that five-forty-five from the thirteen hundred.
Yeah, and so if you build five-forty-five, then the rest has to be.
I think that's what people misunderstand.
Yeah, but we may go, we may go in here and we may build less housing, you know, and, but anyway, so we have five-hundred-and-forty-five units. We have in here the possibility to put in two hotels with a combination of five-hundred-and-fifty rooms. This is sort of in the idea, you know, we don't know where hotels might go, if, the village may be a place that nearby there, there would be a, a place for a hotel, but in the total project, we're limiting the, the hotels. But here, we wanna leave the option to have up to two with five-hundred-and-fifty rooms, you know, if it makes sense. The, the next thing is retail sales, three-hundred-thousand square feet of retail sales. We wanna have professional offices and have the ability in here to do maybe two professional offices. And again, this is a, you know, we're talking about ninety-one acres, and we're not sure how each of the pieces fit in. But remember, if we have an office in here, that's one less we can build anywhere else. The next thing is, we're gonna have civic uses, and, you know, we, we put down a number of roughly a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand of civic uses. For businesses, in the, the list we've gone over before, the list of, you know, thirty-nine uses, one of the things we noticed that we really shouldn't, probably was not appropriate here, was a fast-food restaurant, but it's not what you imagine as fast food. Our Londonderry definition of fast food is drive-through, and we thought that that just wouldn't be appropriate in that section.
Or maybe just say, no, no drive-through restaurants.
No drive-throughs. So you couldn't have a drive-through McDonald's, you could have a McDonald's. You could have a Panera Bread, but not with a drive-through, you know. You, it's, we, we thought that drive-through was inappropriate. So when we say fast food not allowed, just understand that's not, it's a definition word, not that you can't have a fast food, but you can have our definition in the town, which is drive-through.
You can get a bagel quickly, but you can't get it in your car.
But you're gonna walk in.
You gotta be on foot.
You'll be on foot. And the idea is, this is a dense urban area, similar to any large urban area, where a person can walk into the same stores that they're used to, but they're walking, and there's no drive-through, there's no stacking, there's no, none of those combinations. It's no different than any street scene in any urban area. We anticipate seeing those uses like coffee and fast food and things like that in an urban area where there's, where there's parking structures, civic uses.
Maybe that can just be redefined as, as fast food allowed, no drive-through.
Yeah.
Then that way, that way it's not confusing to anybody else who picks up this document and...
Good idea, fast food, but no drive-through. Okay. And I'll track it. When we go into doing the definitions, you know, I'll, I will track in. Anyway, so, the idea is that...
Dana, Dana, I have a question. John, just for clarification, on your retail sales, that includes your specialty shops, your storefront shops?
Yep, all.
Whether it be a Kohl's, a Target, whatever.
Kohl's, Target, or, you know, a yarn shop, all are included in that.
Okay, so everything is up to approximately three-hundred-thousand square feet?
Right.
Okay.
In, in that whole area. But in the area, remember, the two parts of that area, there's the southern part, which backs up on the market basket, okay? And then we're going to have the, we're gonna have the boulevard, okay? And the idea of the boulevard is going to be something that will have mixed use along it. It'll have, you know, but, so when, when somebody's thinking, it doesn't necessarily mean it's all gonna be concentrated in the, the heart of the village, which is the southern part of that, but this, this whole village core will be the one that has those things. But it's, it's three-hundred-thousand.
Right, you know, you're some, something similar to Newberry Street.
Yeah.
You know, where you have your, your storefronts with your lofts and, you know, apartments and stuff above, and, or studios, that sort of thing.
Yep, and the, you know, the village thing will be more villi-, you know, more villaging. But that's, you know, the boulevard and the... Okay, so, that's basically, you know, what we have. Anybody have any concerns or comments?
Questions on board? What's the, for the residential, what's the proposed density for that area?
Okay.
That's something I'd like to see added to each of these.
The maximum we could do, the maximum we could do is five-hundred-and-forty-five units, and that is ninety...
Ninety-one acres.
Ninety-one acres. But this, of all the places in the project, in the, in the property, this would be the one where they're liable to the, the multifamilies, the, the double units, the townhouses, you know, this would be where we'd have the apartment building. If you take the whole place, this is where that would be.
Yeah. What I'm looking for, for each of these, would be a, a density rating for, if you put that many units in there.
It's just under six per acre.
Six per acre. If we can add that to each of these for, whatever the density rating is, that's another piece of information I think is useful.
Should it be built to the max?
Yeah, exactly.
But also, what I noticed was missing was the acreage on each of these pages. So if you put that acreage...
Well, it's behind you on the...
No, I know it's behind me.
No, no, no.
The written portion as well.
Absolutely.
I know it's, I can find it, absolutely, and I just went through and put them all on.
So, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put acres on, and I'm gonna put the units...
Residential density purge.
On each of the ones when we max residential density.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I went through and added the acres to each one of these sheets.
I think we all did.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
The other question to hand was, maybe Andre or someone from town can tell me, three-hundred-thousand square feet equivalent in town?
Well, again, this is gonna be mixed. They're broken up into multiple buildings, so you're not gonna be looking at one single building of three-hundred-thousand square feet here.
Could possibly.
Not based on...
No, no.
It's not to a total of, right?
I think that's, that's one of the things John was talking about. In this type of area, there would be some written part of the plan and the regulations that limit the size and scope.
Max size for retail establishment. Okay, so that would be added into this.
Yeah, what'll be the awkward part is the written word.
Well, and also, could we, Tim, could you go back to the sheet one?
Yep.
The way the master plan is, is worded, this is a pretty, a pretty detailed diagram. It's not a preliminary site plan.
No, I'm, I'm just looking for maximas at this point.
But, the PUD says, we're supposed to show the approximate scale of what's proposed. And that's what these buildings are actually drawn to scale. And the dark ones are the mixed-use buildings. So if you, if I or somebody else came in with a building that was this big, I think you'd say, you need a PUD modification, amendment.
It would be good to have the maximas in here, just...
Sure, sure, but I just wanna address that one big, big building.
Well, that's why I was asking it. It's 'cause I see that number and I know what someone's gonna say.
Yeah, Chris, to give you an idea, the market basket, the new market basket, is a hundred-and-ten-thousand square feet.
Square feet, yeah, okay.
All right.
And that's the big one in the lower right-hand corner.
Yeah, that's the big one in the lower right-hand corner. That's a hundred-and-ten-thousand square feet.
This is here. It's not stated here, but I think it needs to be implied for the public, too, that whatever gets developed out as commercial or retail is gonna take away from the acreage. Based upon your density, that lowers the amount of residential you can put in there, right?
Yep, there's the trade-offs.
One of the things I've asked John to do, again, when we get further along the road, is I think it would be extremely helpful for staff, when we actually get to the implementation of this through site plan and subdivision level, is to have basically an interactive spreadsheet or a database, where when something gets proposed and approved by the planning board, I can plug that into W two-one, there's three-hundred units that have been done here, and I'll then subtract that from the overall density within that area, as well as the overall project, so we can keep track of everything and making sure that we're within the parameters of what the PUD master plan would eventually approve.
Are we just on two dot dash one, or can we add general...
We're trying to walk through each one.
Okay, all right.
Individually.
Then I'm good with two dash one.
Dana? Yeah, I, just so that I'm clear, the, this apparently is new, all, the residential units will now include, you know, your market rate, workforce, and senior, or is the seniors still over and above?
If it is not a market rate seniors, if the town goes and asks us to do something that's not market rate, that would be above. But if it, if we build housing in the village that, as Rick says, comes in at market rate, that's, that's under our numbers. But if...
Andre? Then you just address one of my, my questions. And if thirteen hundred units is, is the max that we've been working with those far, and if W two-nine were to be market rate, age-restricted development, which would match the development across the street, you would not be opposed to that. I mean, the threshold's still thirteen hundred units, but if you had, if you had market rate, senior housing in W two-nine, not opposed to that.
Yeah, if it's, the catch is, if it's market rate, that's fine. If it's non-market rate, whether it be seniors or workforce, then it would be...
Above thirteen.
That would be something we'd put with the board to give direction on.
But one thing I think people are misconstruing is, is that when you have workforce housing, you want it incorporated into regular market-rate housing.
That's a cool question. That's why we have an inclusionary zoning ordinance.
That's the whole premise of it, is so that there's no differentiation. The buildings look the same on the outside, but there's different users, particularly in market-rate apartments. Somebody in the market-rate apartment might have workforce housing in that company, and they really wanna live there enough, but it's really, there's no difference in the unit itself. It's a, it's a passer because you asked the developer to put it in the plan, and you've given us a higher density because of it.
Well, and that's, it's an opportunity that addresses a problem that we heard from again and, about again and again, when people were coming out, objecting to the workforce housing plans that we discussed last year. You know, people don't wanna see everything, workforce housing project concentrated in one spot, and they don't want the density concentrated someplace else, and the opportunity to mix it in with other, you know, other uses is, is a good one, that we don't have in other parts of the town.
Just to clarify a little bit about that, Laura, I think that's primarily in the multifamily workforce, I think that was the main issue. The ordinance that, for inclusionary housing that was developed for the single-family workforce has always had that put into the play. It's always been twenty-five percent of the units mixed in with market rate. So that's always been part of the plan for our single-family inclusionary housing. The multifamily, again, in order to make them work, the density had to be higher, so there's a higher percentage of workforce units in a multifamily situation than there would be otherwise.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to make, you know, know for sure, because looking at this and the village concept and everything, it's something I can see a lot of the seniors, retirement-age people being very conscious of and maybe wanting to move into that area because then they have everything there, they don't have to rely on getting around in a car. And, you know, I don't wanna just flood it either, you know. I mean, I wanna keep it reasonable and keep a reasonable density that works for everyone. You know, and so as long, you know, if we can manage and make, keep it market rate and still, which I think in this type of thing... will work out to be affordable for everyone, hopefully, I think it's gonna work.
Well, as, as a suggestion, because this has been sort of a point, not a red herring, but a little bit of a sticking point from day one, what if I propose, I haven't discussed this with my client, so if he throws it in the back?
Your neck's on the line.
I know, he loves these.
Ten percent, up to ten percent, one hundred and thirty additional senior and affordable units. And we start defining tonight where those might go, and W-2-1 could be one of those locations.
Tim, where are we at? We have a cap on senior housing, so where are we at?
Uh, we, we don't have the new demographic information yet from the two thousand and ten census, so I haven't been able to do that calculation, but based on the two thousand census-
Thirteen percent.
We were at thirteen percent is the cap, and we were well below that. I just think we had several hundred units of available capacity.
Yeah, if, if we were to build out every age-restricted development that was approved and, and built, we had upwards of four hundred and seventy-five units. Some haven't gone forward, like the Wedmore Estates, therefore-
The cider mill project, those are projects-
And those were included in those calculations, so-
So we probably have at least, I'd say, conservative estimate, at least five hundred units of capacity under the cap at two thousand, whether or not we have more now.
I wanna, just to let everybody understand, workforce housing also points to, you know, income, income viability, which means your firefighters, your, your police, your teachers, they can all probably qualify in most instances for workforce housing and live where they wanna be living, and working in a unit, which is, I think, a very positive aspect of workforce housing.
And where are we with workforce housing in terms of, I know that we're supposed to make everything, basically everything, all the available, available for it.
It's the availability and the mechanism to do that. Again, there's no obligation for the town to provide or have anything built, we just have to have reasonable opportunities for it, which, under our ordinance, we now comply with that statute.
So if I'm understanding what you just proposed, that may not necessarily, but the option is there if the town wanted it.
Correct.
Right.
And, and I think, based on some of the suggestions that I've, that I've seen, is that I, I think, maybe some of the rub is that if thirteen hundred units is the max, then can we integrate that ten percent within that thirteen hundred units?
No, no, the thirteen hundred is the base market rate minimum that the project needs to make money. I couldn't, I don't think I can state it more plainly than that.
I, I understand that, and I, I guess that's just where the rub is, is that, you know, can that be integrated in the thirteen hundred units?
If we put like a hundred units within that thirteen hundred for either workforce or fifty-five or older.
Well, the thing is, this, your ordinance would allow more like the rumor mill of thirty-six hundred units. Your ordinances would allow six thousand workforce units if the project turned into being just that. That's not what the project is about. The project is about a very carefully crafted mix of uses, and we've enumerated them now based on smaller areas. If, and it's, it's a, it's a fine project at thirteen hundred units, if the workforce and senior housing becomes an issue, let's just take it off the table. You know, let's just rule it from the discussion.
Do we have any way of, I mean, you, you said that these are gonna be market rate, the thirteen hundred are gonna be market rate, and I understand that. Some of them are gonna be small, and some of them are gonna be multifamily, some would be in the village. It, I mean, do we have any way to, I imagine that some of those are gonna fall within the threshold of affordable from London area. There's probably gonna be a number of-
I suspect they will, yes.
And, so we don't need to necessarily designate them as affordable, if they're going to be anyway. I'm just wondering if there's a way we could, you know, figure that out a little bit ahead of time. I guess we don't really know what market rate's gonna be quite yet.
And I think that's something that could change from year to year or something, you know, 'cause this is, this is a twenty, twenty-plus year thing. So, I don't know, maybe, let's say what, you know, when it does start, what's the price of the housing and everything, and then go from there, 'cause we can always adjust the, make changes of the master plan as we go along.
Based on, based on the income levels for where London area is located, you're looking at basically, for, for, for ownership, affordable workforce housing is somewhere in the neighborhood of two eighty to two ninety for a purchase price. And for rental, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve to thirteen hundred for rental.
I think we'd be achieving this by default. If, if we're getting the mix of uses in this development that we've been discussing, I just, I think we're gonna hit this by default. And we may not need to say that we need an extra, you know, a surplus of this many affordable or, or elderly housing units. I, I think within that thirteen hundred, we're gonna be hitting our mark all over the place, much more so than we would any other place in London area, without some really designated high density built.
Again, with the, with the mix of densities that you're proposing here, there's the very good likelihood that some of these, by, by, at their market rate, will probably qualify at some point as affordable workforce housing.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't think necessarily that there's a good reason for us to say, to increase that thirteen hundred number right now with, with some made-up number that we choose for, for, for higher density.
Yeah, especially tonight.
Let me interject myself in that, in that regard.
Do you really need to be out of, out of mind?
If, if in the future, this is a wildly successful project, and the resale values for what was affordable housing now isn't, then you don't have any affordable housing. And that's, that's, that's what you face ten years down the road. If you have units that, well, let's, let's take, let's take lofts, and, and young people buy all the lofts, and they're loving the lifestyle, and there's a, all of a sudden, there's a demand for these lofts on the resale market, well, what's gonna happen? Prices are gonna go up, and now you no longer have something that's affordable under the, under the guidelines of the, of the, of the law that can only be sold as, as that type of unit. And I think that's something that you have to-
That is, that is the one thing you would gain by having-
What to keep in the back of your mind, as, as it comes online, it might be affordable, but it might not be affordable housing ten years from now, because it might be too attractive. It's, it's happened in Portsmouth, where people, where kids are living in the, in the lofts, and now there's other people that wanna live in those lofts, because now it's really trendy and it's active, and people wanna be there, well, the prices have gone up, and they're no longer affordable, quote unquote. So, I think, I think it's important to have a, a definition or a, a maximum that has to be there, so that it's there in perpetuity. But if we don't wanna have it, I mean, it's, it's fine by me, but I think, I think it's something to make the mix work. I, I think it has to be there, and, and that, that's the only thing I, I wanted to bring to the table. I, I think, I think you should, if it's five percent, it's five percent, if it's ten percent, it's ten percent. I, I, as, as a developer, it's, it's not that important to me, but I think if you're planning for the future, you have to understand that market is gonna, is gonna dictate what those units are gonna be worth in the future, not what they're gonna be sold at in the, in the primary, uh-
And for the purpose of sales- Tom's had his hand up, so I'll go to Tom.
Tim, that's my question, and I guess partially answered is, if something's designated as workforce housing, and it's, and it's next to market rate housing, what happens when the, the current tenant leaves?
If, if the board were to designate and allow for specifically workforce ownership housing, there is a mechanism within our retention of housing affordability section that would cap resale value, and basically sets up a lien on the property that maintains that affordability moving forward over a course of forty years. It's a complex formula that I'm not gonna try to explain now, but we do have a mechanism built into our existing ordinances that allow for maintenance of the long-term affordability of those projects that are specifically designed as such.
Well, well, so effectively, you're gonna suppress the price?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so-
Keep it affordable.
Then you're gonna designate who can buy into this place, because you're gonna qualify them by your price. And how long is that gonna-
Forty years.
Forty?
Yes.
I mean, I, you know, I, I agree with Mike. I mean, we can, you know, probably when this starts out, we're gonna be fine. But, you know, the hard part of this is trying to think fifteen years down into the future. Well, you know, none of us have a crystal ball. I, personally, I would much rather see the option for it there. You never have to exercise that option.
That's correct.
But if the option isn't there to begin with, then you don't have the option. It isn't gonna hurt to have it, but it could hurt if it's not there, so that's kinda the way I look at it.
And to advance the nice discussion, we could just say W-2-1 could be an area where workforce housing could go, and we don't have to pick a number, and if you're uncomfortable with that.
When we do the written portion.
Right.
But, just put it in the back of your head, because I think it's important to both, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we have a crystal ball to look ahead ten years. You tend to look backwards much, much easier. But, I mean, one thing with the housing market that's happening, I mean, there's been tremendous changes, and I'm sure big changes to come, and everyone feels the housing market's depressed, well, it's depressed for single-family housing, but you look at apartments and, you know, condos, they're increasing in value, tend to be more desirable. I think this is how things are going to go, especially when you get, the US government is really getting out of the, support of the finance of housing, and things are gonna change even further.
Yeah, what a-
Just, you know, I guess as a town council liaison, I, I'm just gonna make a suggestion here that I, I'm not really comfortable with an unelected body making a decision like that without the elected body having some input in that decision.
Which decision is that?
About, you know, you mentioned ten percent, or whatever percent, or whether it should be no percent. I think the town council should have some consideration in that.
Well, I think you do, welcome to the planning board.
Well, but I'm not the town council, I'm one of them.
No, you are the liaison, so the point is you bring it back to the council, discuss it, and bring it back to us.
That's why I'd like to do that.
Well, nobody's making decisions tonight.
Well-
This is conceptual discussion, Tom, so-
Do a talk.
Mr. Chairman, I imagine, like, most people that deal with things, you know, easy, they talk about-
This, this is what the developer wants.
Yep.
The affordable is what if you wanted it. You apparently don't want it, I'm gonna take it off the table, let's just take it off the table for now. If, if at the end of the project, we come back to it, we come back to it, let's not waste any more time talking about it.
Right.
Let's focus on what the developer wants, and if you decide you want it later, we'll come back to it.
Well, I think it's important that we've made the distinction between the fact that the thirteen hundred units does not include it, and that if we wanted it, it will be in addition to that.
Correct, yep.
So, the, the public has been made aware of that, and we've heard from one person, and I heard from someone else who would like to, us to consider establishing housing for our future special needs adults within the community. So there's other, you know, there's other types of housing that, possibility for a future discussion that we can have. But I agree with you there.
For tonight, we're saying five hundred and forty-five units within W-2-1. If you want to add something to say, you know, special consideration should be given to this, that, or the other thing, within that, that number, fine. But I think we need to try to start making progress on what we've put in front of you. And this, this optional affordable thing is just, it's too complex an issue, let's just not talk about it right now.
And what we can do, remember, this is the conceptual stage, we're still gonna do a written portion, and then we're coming back with the full plan. So between now and then, you know, the town council or anybody else who has input at what it might be, you know, can weigh in on the, on what we should do.
So we started around this side of the table, but we hadn't gotten to-
Has everyone had input on the, the side here? Okay.
I have a couple of questions. Just looking at the W-2-1 maxima on, on this document, and then comparing it to the written document. Now, in the written document, there's no mention made of the medical space, so I didn't know if that was an oversight.
Medical, I, if we're talking about medical offices, that's just office space.
On, on the master plan, though, on this one-
On the plan portion, it says, medical, one hospital, up to three hundred beds.
Says that, yeah, hospital, up to three hundred beds, or two hundred and fifty thousand square feet.
Yep. Well, I mean, I would interpret it as the written word is what the, yeah.
I would hope it would agree.
Yes.
That would be my hope.
I think as long as we get clarification, what's, what's it writing is what-
Well, here's the, that's, that's what you get with two authors.
Oh, that's fine, I appreciate that.
So, what the, what the plan says is that the hospital use could move within W-2-1, so that's a question for the board. Is that a flexibility you're willing to grant or not?
Okay, well, let me, let me ask you my question, and it is, you know, the W-2-1 maxima, it can accommodate everything that's listed there? And that's, that's the way it's designed?
Yes.
So what, what happens if, you know, market conditions or state regulations say you're not gonna put in a hospital? What do you do with the space?
It doesn't go in?
What, what do you do with the space that's slipped over?
It goes away.
It just kinda morphs away?
Because we also have the hospital allowed in another place, and in the other place, we have other uses for the space also. We'll lead again to W-2-4, we have, that would be a location for a hospital. If it doesn't go, we have other uses to take the space, and the same thing would be here.
And that would be the same for civic buildings going through the rest of the plan?
Round, round, yeah.
Thanks, that's, those are my questions.
All set, Lynn? Laura?
My only question is, you've mentioned schoolchildren, and I should probably know this, but what use would a school fall under?
Now, under, in this, in this lexicon, it would fall under civic use.
Civic use?
Yep.
And, uh, uh, okay, we're just talking about W-2-1 right now?
Yes.
Yes.
What you're saying makes sense to me, I don't have any questions.
This is a, this is a quick, uh, quick note on W-2-1. With regard to the flexibility of the, of the hotel use, and I think I've shared this with you before, it says, it's not so much I disagree with the flexibility, because I, I think there's comparable uses, it's just to where you put it. If you put it towards the southern area of the property, then, then as far as the traffic impact, it's concentrated in that area. You put it in the northern area of the property, then it creates another dynamic. So, I mean, you just gotta be conscious of, of that.
And that's something that takes question in a way that I'm more of a specific, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Lisa?
Yeah, to Andre's point, those were my only red flags about, it came up for me as, when I saw hotels, um, just, you know, how are you gonna get there, and, but I, I suppose it's all down the line of where the roadways fall, and, you know, where the current exit is right now, and, and the access points to that area clearly are, are limited, and, um, wouldn't sustain that level of traffic, but again, that's, that's something that's for further discussion along the line. But that, those were, would be my concerns when I first hear that.
Yeah, 'cause that's really the, you know, a further step as we get into more, more detail and setting, you know-
Yeah, I acknowledge that.
Site plan regs for this whole thing, and, John? Is it John?
Yep, um, on, on two one, I'm all set right now.
Okay, 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 so I'll say, is the board, at least at this point in time, all set with W-2-1, what has been presented, and what we have modified on it, and the workforce is not part of the discussion on, on this.
The next one is-
I was gonna do it at the, at the end, so we, we can get through this. And once we've completed everything here, I think this, this is probably the, it's gonna take the most time, but we've already spent time on it, so-
You've spent a lot of time on a lot of the issues that are-
Yeah. A lot of the issues are gonna fall into place.
And once, once we've covered what you wanna cover, then we'll open it up to the-
Yeah, and, but I, I think we, we touched on a whole slew of the issues that apply everywhere else. So, for example, the next one-
Yeah, I think we should cover them, because people are listening also on, on this.
The, the next one is W-2-2, which is the, the primary intent of this area is to give a variety of housing in low-impact recreational and civic space. It's a medium density, and it's a buffer between, whoops, W-2-3, which is gonna be the offices or hotels on ninety-three, and the heavier use in the village. In this area, we'd allow up to a total of a hundred and ninety-five units, no hotels, no retail, no professional offices. We'd allow ten thousand feet of, square feet of civic uses. We'd allow some things like bed and breakfast, adult daycare, group daycare, home occupation, parking structures, and commercial recreation, if we want to have something like renting bicycles or doing, you know, the, or, you know, who knows, some-
The anyways.
Small, small red scope, maybe commercial recreation, all other businesses is out. So this basically is a transition zone, a little, a little less dense than two one, and a buffer towards the, the highway. So we have the highway use is W-2-3, and then this is sort of just a residential use in the middle.
And this maximum density is also five point nine per acre.
How much?
Maximum five point nine.
Five point nine.
Okay.
Okay, and then for the, the mathematicians, that leaves five hundred and sixty units out of the thirteen hundred left. Okay, and then for the mathematicians, that leaves five hundred and sixty units out of the thirteen hundred left.
If we were to build all these units in these places...
If you build all, all those.
And, and depending, somebody asked the question before, what happens if we're, if we have a little more office space in two-one? Well, maybe we get a little denser in two-two and less housing. But that gives us a little flexibility to go between the two, the two areas.
It's like a transition.
Yeah, it's meant to be a transition housing area. Okay, any...
Any, any questions from the board on, on this, W two-two?
Again, W two-two goes back to our primary discussion on W two-one. Four thousand odds here as well, and so somebody needs, you know, it's something that we need to anticipate or not anticipate in the written portion of the, of the document when we get there.
Okay, yeah, understood.
I'm sorry.
Do you have a question, Lynn?
Yeah, just a general question.
Okay.
In, in terms of the, the lines delineating the different maxims on here, what are they based on? The road structure you have, or is it the lay of the land?
It's, it's roads and, and uses shown on the underlying plan both. Also, if you look at the bottom of the plan, I've added a note that on, around the perimeter, right down here, around the perimeter, the areas follow the property lines, boundaries, but otherwise they can vary by a hundred feet.
Okay, I was looking at W two-one, it's got a little sharp jog in it, and I'm thinking, you know, what's, what feature is that working around?
I'm trying to balance the line between it not being a preliminary site plan, but it having a preliminary site plan-looking thing under it.
Yep, understand.
I'm all set. Any questions, Lisa?
I'm just struggling to understand what W two-two is going to look like. Can you, can you just give me a hypothetical as you look at your map here? So, for instance, if where Pillsbury Road is, are you saying that the businesses you're talking about would be up near there with some frontage of trees, and then the businesses, then there's houses behind it, and then there's... I'm just, I'm having a tough time envisioning how that section's looking to the average person.
Okay, think of this as mostly housing, okay? A little bit of civic space, okay? It's, it's basically, you know, it's basically housing and with a little bit of civic space is what it, you know, what it will be. And so, it'll be a combination of probably, you know, single-family, you know, townhouses, some apartments. But it'll probably from the village area, it'll be denser towards the village, probably get less dense as we go in that area, probably get a little denser when we get to the edge where the, the offices may be. So, it'll be mostly housing.
Lisa, I can help with this, but just not tonight because it was submitted earlier.
I'm going to see if I can get it off the town website while we're going off, because I know I have all those materials up there.
Okay, we discussed early on with the board about, like, archi, archi, easy for me to say, architectural standards. And rather than trying to have all sorts of geometric criteria and all that, we thought we'd use images. So, it would be very easy to show images of what this type of neighborhood would look like. I happen to live in this type of neighborhood, so it's very familiar to me. But you have apartment buildings that look like big, single-family houses. You have a lot of forty, fifty-foot frontage residential lots, some served by rear alleys, some served by front-serving driveways. The narrower the lot, the more you need a rear alley to serve the lot. Very walkable, you know, very pedestrian-friendly, not big-scale buildings, probably, what's thirty feet is your typical? What's your building height for...
Thirty feet, yeah.
Yeah, probably most of the buildings in this neighborhood would fit in that.
Yep.
Not, not the one you showed, but it's in that, it's in that set.
More, yeah, colonial-type style.
There's one that's called, I think, a typical residential street.
I'm not going to get the contextual work.
Okay.
This is download.
Oh, okay.
Take a look in.
My curiosity really is, is peak trying to understand how that's going to butt next to the one that we talk about next with W two-three, where you've got, you, the, these, these, this housing at W two-two is essentially going to be looking at the backs of these potential hotels and other things that might be proposed for W two-three. And that's, that's what I'm struggling to understand. But perhaps we should move forward to W two-three if there's no questions, if I'm the only one who's stuck on this, and maybe I'll understand it a little bit better.
I think some of it will be explained when we get into W two-three also.
Yeah, I got Tom first, I'll go to John. Tom?
John, maybe you can explain, hotel uses are not allowed, retail sales establishments are not allowed, professional offices are not allowed. But then it says something about parking structures. Is that going to be like satellite parking for the offices and hotels?
It, it might be, because this, just in that transition area, what I would see that possibly on one of the edges of the area towards W two-one or W two-four, there might be a parking garage there, but not a, we don't want businesses in there, but it might be a parking garage there.
Thank you.
Okay. A parking garage would be embedded inside a block, so it would be surrounded by residential. If, if one happened in this neighborhood, it would be surrounded by more residential-scaled buildings and just embedded inside, you wouldn't, and it wouldn't be a Hanover Street Portsmouth parking structure. I just added the possibility so a smaller one, primarily serving residential could be embedded in a block.
And it would be multiple floors?
Two or three, maybe, maybe one down, two up.
Thanks.
John?
I, I, I think in support of, of the visualization, if I recall, at one of the meetings that I attended over at Woodmont, we had talked about getting a better depiction pictorially of, of what this would look like based on the zoning components that you're really requesting. Those are individual homes. I'm looking at, at, at this picture here, and from a zoning perspective and what you have in, in your, your worded document, again, I was, I was told by you, John, I believe, that you would get some type of drawing that updated more to what you're looking for versus what we currently are seeing here. And, and I'll cite W two-two, and I will cite W two-five, as that's what you were going to work on, because there was an in-depth discussion around transitional components from, say, W two-three to W two-two to W two-one, as well as what's zoned out and requested versus what is actually pictorially put here. And, and I was expecting to see that, at least by now, and I don't, I think I'm curious on where that would be. Because again, I think, I think there's, there's some confusion, as we just saw, around what, what this is really going to look like.
It's going to have buildings... Oops, sorry.
That's not, that's not what I'm asking. I, I think what, what I'm asking for is this picture here.
Yep.
Just so we're all clear, right? I, I see a lot of detail here. I see a lot of houses here. I see a lot of houses in W two-two. But then when I start reading what, what the requirements are from the zoning component, we had this discussion at Woodmont, they, they don't sync. And what I asked for was a pictorial depiction of what it really is, what the reality is. So, when I start looking at what commercial use may be for a particular area, I'd like to see your vision on that.
Okay, let me explain that. What you have in terms of the plan on TND one is the current best idea of what we think is going to happen. And it doesn't show a hotel. It doesn't show a park... Doesn't show it? Doesn't show a hotel, doesn't show a parking structure in W two-two. Because we don't think that's today, we don't think that's what's going to go there. But what we're doing with these documents is providing a rezoning for that area. We're not fixing any land uses, we're providing a rezoning. And I feel it's irresponsible for me to recommend to my client, as does John, to say he can't ever put a hotel in there because that could become a market possibility, which if it did, requires him to come back before the planning board with a very specific site plan showing exactly what it's going to look like, exactly how its driveway is going to function, where it's going to park, how it's going to drain, how it's going to be lit, all the, all of those details. I don't think a hotel will go there today, but my crystal ball is no better than ours.
Granted, I understand. I, I, I want to, I want to continue down that, that train of thought, but what, what you do have in W two-one and W two-three is a buffer of W two-two, right? And this area is very well-defined, and then I have this W two-two, which is this middle ground, and, you know, we could have a parking garage there. We, we don't know what apartment building-type stuff is going to look like, but we know that's going to happen there because we've seen it. I mean, it exists today. And again, you don't have the pictorial here, so it's very difficult to visualize. And I think the rest of the, the, the audience here and at home can't visualize the discrepancies between what you're actually showing on this piece of paper versus what the words say.
Okay, well, please help me to help you, because we're proposing to show building types that would fit in a neighborhood like that. We've shown some images of some street scenes that have been sort of like in the top there, which is a little bit obscured by the trees. That's that type of neighborhood. Is that not doing it? Do you want color photographs? What, what would help with that?
John, are you talking in reference to TND one? It's the main sheet with the diagram on top.
I'm talking about TND one, right? And, and, and please, you know, I don't, I don't need color photographs. What I need to see is a better pictorial about how you would like the zoning and what you think is... And, and I know we're talking about the hotel maybe not going there.
But we say pictorial...
And I was told we would get a better representation of what the zoning requirements are that are being asked for as to the pictorial layout.
Okay, well, I'm an engineer. Pictorial, do you mean a planned view with more detail? Do you mean an image like you're standing on the streets?
This picture.
I think he means...
TND one.
Andre?
John, if I understand you right, is that, that the TND one shows a commercial light structure at the, at the southern portion of the, of the W two-two section, correct?
W two-two?
Yeah. If, if that's the area that we're talking about.
I think that's actually in the two-one.
It is, that's in two-one.
John's at the two-one. What I think John's getting at, and I have the same concern, is that in two-two, in this, for the areas where there are commercial in two-one, you've got some smattering conceptual, we know, you know, it's not going to be a building specifically there. That's when we get to site plans. But in this area, it's all showing as houses, not some of those other uses that might be in there.
Sure.
And I, I think I'll give you an example of this. When, when I go to W two-eight and two-seven, when it was all one lot, okay? There was a component in the initial drawings that we saw where sixty-six houses were on this with six entrances into that off of the main street, okay? Quickly, that was changed to depict a, a, a more accurate representation of what we could be looking at there because of traffic concerns and other types of issues. What we haven't seen is that this proliferating, this type of behavior proliferating throughout the plan to depict a more accurate presentation of what potentially could be there's uses. And we're not holding you to that, we're just not seeing an accurate presentation.
Well, no, I just, I disagree. I think W two-two does show what is proposed, and it's mostly fairly narrow lots, a mix of widths, some with some back greens. That's what's currently thought of. But the zoning that's overlaying it is to provide some flexibility. And the other part that we talked about in one of the first meetings was the fact that this isn't a preliminary site plan and that variation was going to be allowed. And there are graphic examples in the written portion of the master plan that show this. So, I guess we're at a fundamental...
I think, I think it's for, for the words to be visualized, you know...
This, this is in the written portion of the master plan, and what the words say is that, okay, here's, here's the master plan. If the master plan's drawn like this, but the site plan comes in like this, and this building moved over here, that's okay. Now, that's, that's...
I agree with you, but you're, you're not depicting any of those types of uses in those areas. And I can also cite W two-five as another example of that, where you're showing nothing but residential when the uses could be something totally different.
Well, John, I think a bed and breakfast home stay, an adult daycare center, a group child care center, a home occupation, everything except for the parking structure and the commercial recreation could be in one of these homes. Could be in one of these, that size lot with that size building that's depicted in two-two. And then what, what is the, there is a commercial something here at the, at the bottom of...
A civic component.
That's the civic component, okay. And so, and then along the main artery are the trees, you know, the, the apple trees and the, and the light residential that is across the street up on the hill. So, I, I, I think the only difference here would be is if they decided they were going to plop a parking garage, where would that be? Because all other commercial, or a commercial recreation place, where would that be? That's what you're asking, is where would you put it?
Right.
On, on this site, where would you, where would you feel comfortable putting it should you decide to do that? And so, he's just saying, can you show me, you know, you certainly, you'd have these, these houses, these multifamily or, or town or whatever it is that you happen to have here, but if you were going to put a parking garage or if you were going to put a recreational facility, where would it be?
I think it may be a terminology issue. But let's just say that if we had apartments that had parking underneath in a continuous sort of parking apartment-building-style form, let's not call that a parking structure, let's call it part of an apartment building. And let's not have a separate independent parking structure. Let's just keep that out of there.
Okay, so then you would change the definition here? You would just change the...
Does that address a part of your concern?
That's fine.
Then it's all residential.
For, for two-two, sure. But I think as you move through, you'll find it's the same.
Let's keep, let's keep going.
Sure, that's fine.
You all set, John?
Fine, thank you.
Okay, anyone else has questions on W two-two? Okay.
Okay, W two-three, that's what we call the highway fringe area?
Yeah, so W two-two parking garage is, is out?
Taken out. Yep. Okay.
Okay.
W two-three, this is the highway fringe to promote large-scale business and commercial uses such as offices and hotels. The area is meant to be a visual and sound buffer between I ninety-three and residential units to the west. This place has space for some residential units, and the idea, one of the ideas is that between the, the offices, then when you step into the residential, that may be a denser residential along the, the side of the road, getting to lesser dense as you go, as you go inside to W two-two. At this place here, we could have retail sales up to three hundred thousand square feet. We could have seven professional offices. We could have civic uses up to ten thousand square feet, and we could have other business uses up to two hundred and fifty thousand square feet. The idea here is of, this is one of the places where the, the larger buildings would be, and depending on what comes in. Could be office buildings, you know, could be hotel, but the idea is on the road, that's what we're doing. And we're, we're depicting, you know, seven buildings, but parts going to depend on who actually wants to come in there as to what it is. So, we're allowing up to seven.
Yeah, Tim?
This is another one of those areas where there's an inconsistency between the, the plan itself and the written document. The written document says fifty-five units, and the maxima on the plan says twenty-five.
Which is right.
It should be twenty-five.
Should be twenty-five, okay. So, the W two-three written version is twenty-five units. Thanks, Tim, and Tom.
Which is just over one break.
W, W two-three has the greater amount of flexibility in this because it's proximated to ninety-three, and the fact that it can act in the high rises can have a noise buffer between ninety-three and the four units that buffer it and then W two-two.
High rises.
Yeah, higher buildings.
Higher building, okay, yeah. I don't want to hear high rises.
Maximum fifty feet.
Okay, Laura?
Do you envision these structures being oriented towards ninety-three? I'm not exactly sure how the topography goes there.
It, it, it drops off down to ninety-three. So, there's, there's basically a slope, there's high ground and a slope towards ninety-three.
So, do you see the buildings, like, when you go down ninety-five, and you see Wraith Down, and you see all, all those? Do you see them oriented towards the highway?
Yeah.
And the parking is going to be on the highway side?
Yes.
Do you expect that you'll have, be putting trees and such behind them at all? Or are they really going to be mostly up against the road?
They're going to be mostly up against the road and the parking structures are facing the road for that reason.
Okay, okay.
Well, to have a more human edge inside the project.
Inside, human edge is on the inside, the industrial looking parking and the face of the building for the, for the signature facing ninety three. Just like you see going down one hundred and eighty five, ninety three.
Well, in our town, we have, we have the windows, Harvey windows. That is, you can't see because they have a nice buffer of trees. And I mean, it is up on the hill and there is slope down to the, to ninety three, but it's buffered very nicely and, you know, Harvey doesn't seem to mind.
Yeah, the, the state owns some of the, the land there also. So I think there's a natural, you know, there's going to be some natural buffer anyway. And it, it does, the basic ride is very deep there.
And this is, this is one of the places that we envision people working and then living.
I was gonna say.
People working and living, live work.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's face it, this is going to be the place where anyone who wants prime ninety three visual real estate is going to be.
That's, yeah, that's the answer.
Yeah, some people like to live close, they get on and off quickly and.
Yeah. And I guess that's where my question was with the, the, the previous section is, I'm curious to see the plans once they come out for that previous section of W two two, because I'm wondering who would want to live there, sandwiched in there. I'm sure there's, there's plenty of options that could make it quite appealing, but I'm just not seeing them, so.
Also, John?
Do we have a maximum person density for that area? Meaning, so if I, if I put in the hotels and I put in the, the office park and I put in the, is it a hospital that's also available there?
Hospital's just down below the W two four.
Okay, so, so let's say I put, I, I load up the density of the, to the max there, which is quite possible because that's, that's going to be the primary estate for that. Do we know how many people we're talking about? Can we get that number?
Very difficult to do because I don't know who's going to be there.
Well, if I, if I put up seventy thou, seven hundred thousand square feet of professional office space, I think we can come up with a cubicle ratio, right?
It depends, it could be.
Okay, Andre?
And I think that as we work through the establishing a master plan, and I think that gets to a lot of the questions that we've been getting through emails or, or questions that have been coming to the board is that, once we have the master plan, then we can kind of look at the impacts as to what, how many people we anticipate in the dwelling units, how many traffic generation, how much water sewer, all that.
Right, because if I, if I look at, you look at where this is relative to, you know, the, the, the access to the highway. So you're looking at exit four, right? And then you're looking at, what's that, Pillsbury?
Yep.
That's, that's where, that's where the, the majority of your, your traffic's going to come from. And whether we like to say it or not, not everyone's going to live and work in this community. So we're going to have an awful lot of people that, that are transient through this area. And, and given that we're putting neighborhoods in there, that, that's going to be an issue. Traffic volume is obviously going to be an issue. And I know we haven't done traffic study, but, you know, you start talking about seven thousand square feet in hotels and so forth. I think it's important that we really look at how logistically people are going to move through this area and, and relative to the other areas.
There are going to be a lot of traffic studies on this project over time. And there's one actually fairly important technical discrepancy. It's not up to seven professional offices, it's up to seven office buildings. And office buildings are a defined term, that it's a building that is primarily office as opposed to in the village, which might have retail, office, residential. It's more of the building like Mike was talking about on Route twenty eight that's primarily the office, but not necessarily professional office. It could be another kind of office.
What kind of office is that? Non, non-professional?
Yeah, unprofessional.
I, I, I don't. But, but, right, I mean, you know, I'm kind of, you know, I'm picturing like Burlington Woods in Burlington, that you have, you know, mall road and all that traffic through there.
You've got some office type buildings today that mix some light assembly work and other things that it's different than, you know, like engineering, architecture offices and those sorts of things.
So then you're talking trucking and so forth, right?
Not, not in a big way, you know, but again, traffic as a whole, separate, got to be addressed at the time when the use is known.
But I understand with, with the, the density of those buildings comes the number of people that are going to be, you know, flowing through that area on a daily basis.
No question.
Right.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure we're clear too. It, it, it was mentioned that, you know, we'll understand the traffic when the use is known. I, I think at the master plan level, there is a level of traffic analysis that we're going to be undertaking just to make sure that what we envision taking place there is something that we can accommodate.
Which we need to get the land use mix nailed down before we can really.
And that's done after the land use map.
Yeah, because I think as we get closer to implementation, then we start getting some idea and maybe we can't deal with the, you know, the level that we're seeing right now.
That's right, yeah.
And so, yeah, it could be substantially less as we get into the, more the reality of it.
And when you're talking office buildings, it could be a hundred feet by a hundred feet by five stories, which on thirty acres really is a small, is smaller foot, is small footprints over the total thirty acres. It's just, you know, it's all, it's all relative to what's going to go there, who wants to be there, and what that it's going to be. But again, if we don't have the capacity to put them there, they don't go. So we're just, we're using our best efforts to try and determine what the maximum would be. And then we come back to the board when we find out who it is. And we might only be able to build two office buildings there when it's all said and done because the traffic just won't handle it or it won't be appropriate. But traffic will probably generate, will probably be the biggest factor that has to be determined is how to handle it. And that's done at the planning board level when we come back. This is the guide. That's all this is, is a guide for, for, for the proponent to move ahead and put his best efforts forward to get these boxes and then bring them to the community and see if we can make them work. The onus is on me to make sure that in the future, the traffic works, that it works with your staff and that it works with the regional planners. And then I propose, and the planning board makes the decision based on all the information that's provided to them at that time. It's, we're going to be doing this for years with different portions and different phases as we move through the process. And at each turn, the onus is on us to provide you with all the information so that you can make a considered decision and then, and then we, and then whether it's appropriate or not. And if it, if it, if the traffic doesn't work, the traffic doesn't work. I have to make that happen. And, you know, this is on, on us to make sure that we propose that to you when we bring that phase forward.
Okay, Dana, I'll do Chris.
You're saying no hospitals and fast food restaurants. Does that preclude, let's say, you know, so a company did go in, does that preclude the cafeteria in the office building?
No, no, it's only fast food and drive food.
Okay, so this is the same as.
Same as.
Terminal, yeah.
We define it.
Yeah.
Okay. Just, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. Okay, Chris?
Yeah, the question I had was regarding residential, twenty five units in that area. Why?
Because we're also dealing with across the street.
Okay.
Because where that, that line is, there'd be some on the other side of the street and maybe that's a place to do a.
The two dash twenty, two dash two?
Right.
You're talking in regards to two dash two?
Yeah, it's also sort of a worst case scenario if they can't get office tenants.
Okay. The other, the other comment, it's just a comment, is that I would expect that there would be some peak traffic times coming out of that, particularly with office hotels. The, the obvious shortcut they're going to take out of there is go north and then they're coming down Londonderry Road to get the exit four versus coming down through the, the center where you're going to have more retail, it's going to be more congested. So I'd be concerned about traffic flowing out of there because that's going to go up into residential areas.
And that, that's one of the things that has to be done on, how to go and deal with it.
Seven office buildings or seven hundred thousand square feet would be the most significant traffic generator on the west side of ninety three. No question.
Okay, Andre?
Yeah, yeah, just on, just on that issue regarding the roadways, I mean, again, once the master plan's established, as we go through each one of these and we, and the board has a comfort level that if that particular land use plan is presented to it and, or I should say, is they formally submit it for their plan and it, we start to actual review, then street roadway whiffs and roadway types are something that we will be working with the applicant on. As far as traffic, you know, again, I, I, I hear that at a site plan level that we're looking to deal with traffic. But from a standard standpoint, we're looking at the preliminary step associated with a master plan supplemental is a review of traffic at a, it's going to be at a higher level. It's not going to be at the detailed level that a site plan, but at a higher level, we're going to be looking at that at the master plan level to make sure that the impact is something that can be handled.
Yeah.
And we have to give you a summary.
I think, I think that's a later meeting agenda item. I think if we can get.
Oh, yeah, I don't want to come here, it, it keeps you getting brought up.
That should be one of the guidelines.
To our site plan level.
Think what we, from what we have present, or will have presented tonight, there's a lot more to come, yeah.
Yeah. With Andre, I'd like to see it as a guideline saying to minimize, you know, traffic into residential areas that are existing areas.
Same.
It should be like a, that's one of the criteria.
I think the board's in agreement with, with that. That's kind of been how we've looked at site plans in the past. Okay, any other questions on W two three? Okay.
One of the, the questions on the next one, the W two four, gets into some of the questions that John had in, brought up. This is one where if a hospital comes in, this is where we want to go and have it. It's sort of a transitional area between the, the office buildings and the village. And this is the area we thought would be. But if it doesn't come in, what we've done is we're saying, you can't have any single or two family housing, housing units. Maybe we let some multifamily be on a, on an edge. We thought maybe we might allow a hotel in here or not. That's sort of one of the questions, do we, do we allow one in or not? You know, it's a, a transition area. Retail sales, we're not allowing. We'd allow one professional office building up to fifty thousand square feet. We'd allow ten thousand square feet of civic uses. And in here, again, is maybe business development center, maybe a conference center, adult daycare, maybe some sort of a school facility, maybe the hospital, maybe some sort of a membership club. But this is sort of the one where probably it would be one or maybe two primary uses in here, you know? Not a hospital, then maybe it's, it's something else. But the idea would be, we don't know for sure what it is, but that's going to be in a, in a transition area between two point three and two point one. And we just want to have some flexibility to put some other similar large.
Would these be related to a hospital use, these other uses?
Well, the other uses would be, if we get a hospital, then you could have, you know, an office nearby. But if we don't have, if we don't have a hospital, maybe that's the place to have a convention center, you know, hotel and a convention center.
So.
Okay, Mary.
Sorry. Does somebody else have a hand?
No, no, I was looking, no one, no one didn't yet, so, but, but John's next.
Where it says home occupation though, if we don't have single family homes and you're talking multifamily homes, how would that be?
But if, if I wanted, if I wanted to run my business out of it, you know, the house that want to run my computer business or something, I, I think any place we have housing, we should allow somebody the option to come in and ask whether they can have a, a home occupation.
Okay.
I just think, trying to be consistent in the housing, that we, we don't have some housing here where you can't run something out of your extra bedroom.
And then I want to make sure that we somewhere down the line get a really clear definition of what a business center development is.
Absolutely. That's one of the places we got to get a definition. It's one of the definitions that we don't have.
John? For, for those playing Woodmud Bingo at home, we start talking about hotels because hotel is mentioned several times in several places. The maximum number of, of hotels for the entire project is three? Is that correct?
Maximum number of hotels is three, with one hundred to four hundred guest rooms each and a total of five hundred and fifty rooms.
So three totaling five hundred and fifty rooms on the, the entire site? Okay, then, and because it's mentioned a lot of times and it's sometimes confusing.
But that's what it is. We don't really know where that.
Sure. And I understand that. Now, now the, the, going back to an earlier point, the, the way you have this depicted on, on this picture that we talked about earlier, and the way this is defined, to me is perfectly in sync with each other. Because you're not sure what you're going to put here, but you do have enough detail in your definition and you're depicting it correctly. That's, that's my point. That's what I'm going to say there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're going to put in a number here, one hotel with up to, you know, this, if it's going to be a convention, it probably should be the largest size we could have, which would be two hundred?
Should we wait for a definition?
This is still subject to the, the cap of three.
Yeah, still subject to the cap.
Make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll move on then to the next one. W two five.
Okay, the next one, we turn the, the northern corridor, which is going to be a small scale, we're, we'd allow mostly residential and some small scale mixed use development in accessible public spaces. And right off the bat, I mentioned, John, I think we should show the, the commercial space that just a little bit bigger than we are showing. Because I think that that's, you know, it should show a little bit bigger. Okay. But in this area, we're up to a possibility of three hundred and forty units. And one of the questions here was, do we, and it, there's no right or wrong answer, just like a little feedback. On a, on a W two five, we have, it's come up, a couple of people said, we have definitions for a bed and breakfast. And, but do we want to have something like an inn? You know, I mean, it could fall under a hotel definition, but do we want to allow an inn? In, the question comes up in some other places. Do we want to allow an inn, which would be more than, you know, a bed and breakfast and, but less than a big hotel, you know, thirty rooms, forty rooms? Do we want to allow it in the area? We don't feel strongly one way or the other, but the comment came up enough times that, you know, we want to allow inns and is this one of the places you might allow it? We'd be just, you know, if we didn't have it, that's fine, but it's just a question that came up. And otherwise, we'd have twenty thousand square feet of retail, ten thousand square feet of professional office, maybe some civic uses up to a hundred thousand square feet. And we'd allow some other businesses up to forty. So in the area between, basically between Pillsbury and up close to the cemetery, you know, we could have a, a module of some commercial thing. We had maybe one, maybe something down near Pillsbury, maybe something up on the other end. But with a, with a limit that it's, this is not very large, but this is mostly residential with small things in the middle.
Maybe, maybe a better definition of retail sales. I'm looking for something that like residences would stop at a store, something to pick up to go home, you know, type of retail.
Yeah. And, and this is one of those places where we can put in that, you know, a, a business can't exceed, you know, three thousand square feet or something. And, and one of the discussions was, you know, I guess I don't mind retail, but I don't want a huge store. I'd like to be able to have it, maybe like some offices, but I don't want a, a Silvania coming in, you know, taking the one space. So this is one of the places where we can.
Yeah, because I'd look for very low intensive use of land for retail.
Yes.
Yes, and that's, that's where a description of what its size would be, maximum size of retail in that area. There might be five retailers, but they're all three thousand square feet. That's fifteen thousand feet. And they're used up, just about everything you've got. So that's what it is. And it's interspersed throughout the entire, that entire area, quarter street. There would have to be probably a quarter street that goes through there. And you would have some, some retail on that quarter street to service the people that live in that area as well. And that's, that's the process. You'd probably envision some medical offices, maybe dentists, doctors, professional offices, lawyers, tax accounts, things like that. Is what, what's envisioned in that area to service the area. And since you probably have a quarter of some sort going through it, that would be the place to put your solid quarter. And that could be fun.
Okay.
And when it show that on the, the plan, if we agree on a number, we'll, we'll have something that shows close to the numbers.
Chris?
Yeah, that, that's something that I think we need to have. You've, in other areas, we've talked to up to a total of.
Yeah.
And this one, we don't have that language.
That's a.
So, yeah, you know, it's, it talks about up to two, twenty thousand square feet. And, you know, I can see a line of twenty thousand, twenty thousand, twenty thousand, you know, what's the max?
Twenty thousand. I'm not envisioning a single.
So total is twenty thousand.
And envisioning definitely in the written portion of the master plan, limiting the size of any category of this.
Of each one. No, no one to exceed both. Yeah.
What, the way I envision each of these little write-ups, Chris, is these are basically the preambles to each of the sections that will have regulations following them.
Yeah.
Okay, Dana.
I just want to explore your thought on the inns to make sure that we're both on the same wavelength. Are you envisioning, what I'm envisioning anyways, is something like a quaint structure with kind of an upscale restaurant and then twenty to twenty-five rooms.
Think of Bedford Village Inn.
Yeah, okay.
Not necessarily with the convention side of it, but, you know, something of that, that ilk, you know, do we? And this is one of the areas, I think there's one other area we're, we're thinking.
We had a couple of people that actually up there, at Woodmont, expressing that there's no place to really have a, a nice wedding. An inn is a nice place to have something. And so you have a restaurant associated with an inn and a nice garden thing for weddings and things like that. So that's the reason we put it out there. There was a request, they thought it would be a nice touch. And where does it go? Well, it goes there. And then it also came up that it might be a good use of W two nine overlooking the water.
So maybe something along the lines of Promises to Keep or Dairy?
That was a specific example.
Okay.
And so under hotel uses, maybe we put something in, you know, one up to thirty rooms. That's an inn. It's not, you're not getting a big hotel. You know, maybe it's twenty rooms. I don't know what the economics of inns are, but, you know, they, you know, in that area, you know, one of the things is, do we allow something like that in there or not? Again, it doesn't make much difference to us if the board wants to have it allowed in there, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll do, we're going to do some more on the board anyway, but.
Well, I was going to speak about hotel. If we're talking about this specific area, I think we're going to have to have different definitions of hotels. We can't just have that general hotel and, because in the, in the ordinance, it does say like more than six rooms or something like that. Six to above six rooms or something is all classified as a hotel.
Right.
And that's, you know, so we're going to have a sep- several definitions of hotel in your plan.
That's fine.
Yep. Yeah, that's what I envision.
Right.
That we, we go and we define, we define, we first have a basic definition, say hotels. This is what the hotel is. This is according to the ordinance. And then in this particular area, we fine tune it even more.
And we say, this is an inn, it's a maximum of thirty rooms associated with.
This is a hotel convention center.
So they can have weddings. That would be, that's the idea. It's not, not, we're not going to have a Hilton here. We're going to have a Bedford Inn or whatever.
So is the board agree that an inn as defined would be, would be good for W two five?
Probably, yeah. Yeah, we'll see what the rest of the board says, but I think, to me, like, well, an inn is, is quaintness about it that.
Sure.
Okay, John.
I'd just like to, to draw the board's attention to page three, which is the green and gray document. In, in reference to two five. If you look at W two one and W two three on the green sheet in page three, W two one, W two three, and W two five all read very similarly. Okay, and if you look at, at, at the, the way they depict it, I mean, clearly it's, it's very similar use between those three areas. Again, going back to pictorial representation, but what I'm asking the board to take a look at is, can we consider potentially disallowing some of those business use types in there? For instance, you have, is it conference center or business center development?
Business center development.
Business center development, car rental terminal, repair services, research development lab, service establishment, warehouse and storage, wholesale businesses. Those types of things is, and again, I'm, I'm asking for consideration from, from the board's perspective to look at and compare what we have here and whether or not we want to limit the uses of this area to more depict a, a residential component with some light business use. Thank you.
I think we should.
Yeah.
I can envision it as light.
Yes.
Very, very light use. It's only my, my opinion. Anyone else, Ford?
I, I think it probably makes sense to scale the uses back a little bit on that. But with the inn, it's probably a good idea, probably more like twenty-five rooms or less if that's, unless that's crazy. But I would.
Yeah.
Does that go against your totals for the?
Pardon me?
Does that go against your total?
Sure. Anything goes against the total.
Right.
A room is a dwelling, like a, like a unit.
Talking about the inns.
The inns, yes.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Uh, one of the, just following with John's thing, because the, what he, what he mentioned, a number of people had, had discussed, and the, the question, one has to do with categories. But the other thing, just about everybody who I was talking to said, if we're doing some of these and we could have other business uses of forty thousand square feet, they were very concerned that they didn't want any of these things to be more than maybe, you know, twenty-five hundred or three thousands square feet. So whatever it would be is more of a, if it's research and development, it might be me trying to figure out how to use my computer better. I do, but the idea was not to, not to allow any large use, but smaller uses. And we're not hung up on any of the particular uses, but the idea, in the limiting language, it'll be that they can't be more than a particular size with the idea of being.
But why have them when you have them, you have them defined elsewhere on the properties that, that are, are more than adequate to support those types of businesses?
Oh, I.
That's my point.
Oh, no, but the question, we're not hung up on any of the.
And I'm not, I'm not hung up on scaling either.
Right.
You know, what we're trying to do again is, is have a, a maximum density and then define what the size of those densities are to make that maximum. And one of the best uses, like in my opinion, you know, we need to be able to say that it's professional office space. It's, 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 you know, professional office space for, for services, for doctors, dentists, lawyers, banking, financial assistance, all, all that kinds of stuff. And all that adds to the maximum. And, you know, and it's, it's interspersed throughout that entire area. But we can even, even further define that as it goes into a particular quarter or a particular center or multiple little centers so that it's dispersed. But, you know, you know, you don't see it right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. It has to be on like, like a major thoroughfare or something like that. And, and that's what we have to do when we define what these are, okay? But what we're saying is, this is, this is our request for the maximum densities that are here. And then we need to define how big those densities are and what kind of uses we want to see in those densities.
And, and if, and if people think that, well, up there, those things we'll allow in W two one, maybe some of the categories we shouldn't do. You know, we don't have a great, you know, we're not, we're not hung up on that at all. It's.
You know, when you say a professional office building, there might be a ten thousand square foot office building, but it's all, it's all professional uses. And it's just, it's just, it's just a thought process and we need to define it and that's what we should be. And we can change that as well to, to a better focus on T and D one.
If, if the, if the input is narrow the list.
Yeah, I would say.
Narrow the list.
Yeah. Andre, then I'll, then I'll go.
Yeah, actually, Mike just went down a path that I, that I was thinking about is with, if you can go back to the, the larger map, T and D one. Right now, you know, that map is shown with an exit for a type of, you know, type of scenario. But if, without exit for a, the, the, almost the draw is not there. Therefore, it'd probably make more sense to have it more concentrated where you have your village area. Or if the ideal is to have a, have the lower scale type of retail to serve the, the area. Meaning that they don't have to always go down to the village area to get whatever. They can, those that live there can go get a.
And that's what you do, but I don't need that question.
And, and one of the thoughts is that you try to have a walkable area and within five to ten minutes, you try to have a place where people can, can walk to. So up in this area, you know, maybe it's closer to the high end, not where the exit would be, but maybe closer to where it shows that oval. Maybe that'd be just a sort of another little neighborhood.
Neighborhood commercial.
Neighborhood commercial area.
So like a bank, oh no, we want them always to go to Market Back there. Okay, so like a bank or a, you know? I, I haven't heard you guys mention banks at all. I mean, you need some.
Financial institutions.
Financial institutions.
Yeah.
And maybe what we do is we eliminate some of these other ones that are better in other areas. We go down and we just, we knock a few more of the categories off to get it more like officey.
And that's my point. That's where I'm at. Because if you look at, if you look at the more industrial, heavy, heavy or light industrial type stuff is where I'm, I'm kind of identifying.
No problem. We'll, we'll go, we'll modify it. We'll go and.
Okay, uh, okay Laura, then I'll do Dana, and then I'll go down here.
I think that in your description, if you can make this, the green sheet agree a little bit more with what you wrote, I think it would make more sense for us. Where you said it, you know, special consideration for the scale and visual compatibility. If it's all residence friendly there and, you know, I, I think you can definitely knock out hotel if we could substitute an inn for that.
Yeah.
But if you make it residence friendly in its size and scale and purpose, I think that's what we're probably shooting for.
What's John saying is that, you know, maybe even if assembly testing isn't very big, maybe that's not the place to have it. So we'll take some of those categories of things off and do it more, we'll call it the, the more officey places and some retail. Okay.
Villagey and officey. We're adding some new words to the English language.
It's a new word. It'll be defined.
There you go.
Dana?
Yeah, just maybe, the other thing really is maybe some of the terminology, I know like, you know, I hear rental car terminal. The first thing I picture is what's at the airport. And, you know, I've been, I've traveled around in a lot of hotels, inns, whatever they're calling them today. They'll have just, you know, an office or a desk where if somebody wants to rent a car, that's great, or a storefront. But they don't have a lot of cars. They'll pull, if they need a car, they'll pull from the airport. They very rarely have more than one or two cars. And personally, that's what I would like to see.
That was one of the limits that we thought of in, in the areas, just maybe limited to say five cars.
One of the, one of the things that came up is, 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 you know, you need to define it because it'd be nice to have things like zip cars that they have in the cities. Where you rent a car for, by the hour.
Right.
So you just use it to run your errands and drop it back off. But they need to have five or six of them in one place so that people can come and go. And that's what they do in the city, that's what's done in the city. You've seen them on the roads. People are driving them. They're coming out of the city in their zip car on a Sunday drive. They take it for two or three hours. They go out, they drive and they run their errands and then they come back into the city and they don't own a car.
And it could be connected like with the bus facility.
Exactly. You can put it there or you can put wherever it's convenient for people to be able to walk to, get a rental car or rent it by the hour, run your errands and then drop that car back off. That was the, that was, that's, that's how we came to that conclusion was through workshops. And somebody said, well, you know, it'd be a good idea if we had that kind of concept. So that's something that needs to be further defined. So when we say rental car, that's the thought process that went behind that.
And as long as that's defined, then?
Then it's defined.
Yeah.
Okay, Tom, do you have anything?
No, I'm off time.
Okay, Chris?
Well, a question about the property that's somewhat surrounded by W two five on Pillsbury. That, that one, I think it's a single house to the north of Pillsbury.
Yeah.
Is there any discussions with that property owner about, they're going to be surrounded by much smaller lots?
Yeah, they've, they've come in a number of times. They're just interested in following what's going on and, you know, they've.
They're interested.
They're interested and they come by and.
Trails.
Yeah.
Okay.
They like the openness and they want to have the trails nearby and they're, they're concerned that it's a wet area next to their house. And when we do this, it'll be much nicer than it is.
Yeah, I, I realize it's, you know, you, it would be impossible to put a buffer around that one, but I just wanted to make sure you talked through that.
Yeah, and, and they really, they like the idea of the buffer here because quite apparently, the way it's been done now, it's, you know, it's, it's more swampy. And we're going to turn this into something nice. Okay.
Okay, uh, okay.
Just real quick, it's been brought up several times, bus terminal, and it's not called out anyplace. As one of the uses. We might want to pick the place where we want to put one.
Good point.
W two.
Well.
It'd have to be, I, I always say W two one because that's.
I would too.
That, that may be in a civic use. I'm not sure what the definition would be, but we'll make sure that it's.
Yeah, it, it should be planned.
Okay.
Okay, Lynn?
Another question. We're talking rental cars, stations, bus stations.
Yeah.
Mike, I think you'd said gas at one point in time. Are we talking dispensing of gasoline or operations to do that anywhere on these plans?
There should be, there should be, there should be a, a couple of places for it. Otherwise, people are going to, it's getting harder and harder to find them. And then if you have an area that's with dense people, there should be some place in the area for people to be able to buy gasoline.
What, under what business use would we have? It is a motor vehicle limited service is basically what a gas station is.
Motor vehicle station limited service?
Yeah. That's what a gas station is. It'd be allowed in W two one, W two three.
Two five.
And W two five. So you might be able to have a, a small.
Two twelve.
Thing up where your little.
Twelve.
Yeah.
Two twelve's going to change because of the discussion we had earlier about foray.
Foray, yeah.
Because, yeah, if we have a primarily residential component up around two five, I, I would strongly suggest not dispensing gasoline in an area like that.
I think I'd keep it to, into the dense area.
Yeah.
That's not a big.
Okay, Andre.
And also, would there be some consideration to limit the number of gasoline stations so you don't have a concentration in one area of two or three?
Could do that with drugstores?
What do you think?
We're next to CVS.
The Rite Aid.
The Rite Aid.
Okay, this, this, at this point, we've covered W two one to W two five. I think there's been a lot there. And I want to get some public input. I want to let the public ask questions or comments on W two one to W two five.
One point, Art, before we do that, are we planning on going through the entire matrix tonight?
Yes, we're trying to, try to get there.
It should get easier.
The next ones are much easier. A lot of them are just.
I think it's going to be easier as we go along.
We said that at.
At the expectation.
Yeah.
I take it there's nothing at this point, because I'll, we'll, we'll cover some more and then we'll give people the opportunity. Okay, Joe Green, you have to grab a microphone.
Sorry, I almost missed my opportunity.
Okay. Basically, my opinion is that we have to identify the total density. I know we took it off the table, but I think it's up to you to actually do that and to identify it. We talked a little bit, a few minutes ago about the thirteen hundred number and if a hundred of it was senior and affordable. Well, that would mean if a hundred of that was senior and affordable, it would now be fourteen hundred because you're identifying it as senior and affordable. So I really think it's very important for us to not take it off the table. I'm just suggesting that we identify that. Second thing is in W two three, professional offices with seven hundred thousand square feet, seven professional offices. This is zoning. This is what he is proposing. And this is what you need to give direction on. If you're now, if you're not comfortable with that now, then you should just say it. It's a zone. If you're now, if you're not comfortable with that now, then you should just say it, it's a zoning use, he's asking you for it. If you're not comfortable with it, take it off the table, give him direction. That's, I think, what we're trying to get accomplished here, by, by going through these things. I don't think you need to wait for the traffic study, I don't think you need to wait for the site plan area timeframe. You're already, you're already, you're already too concerned about it with the conversations that we're having up here, so no is the answer. You left it open, and I just wanted to revisit that, that's it.
I think we want at least some degree of flexibility, because as we go through the iterations of developing the master plan, at that point, we'll probably take, we'll probably take things out. We're going to add things on, I think, at this point, so.
That's how I look at it.
Yeah, I mean, as, as we go through the process, we're at the very beginning, so, you know, the way I look at it, when you develop a plan, you don't want to box yourself in a corner. We have a lot of regulations anyway, some people say we have too many regulations, but it's been through the years that we've developed all these regulations, but.
And currently, we are, we are comfortable with the thirteen hundred maximum.
Yep.
And what we have said, Joe, is that we are going to have Tom take it back to the council, and we're also going to let people, you know, email us or get in touch with us and let us know if they want additional workforce or senior housing. So at this point, we are comfortable with a thirteen hundred maximum.
Okay, Mike?
Mike Speltz, eighteen Sugar Plum. One way to measure the amount of flexibility, because that's really what's at issue here, is, is how much flexibility. The more flexibility the developer has, the easier he can respond to market conditions, as he said. The more flexibility, the more, the less flexibility, the better the planning board and the public understand what's going to happen here. So this is a negotiation, I added up the maxima in, in each of the areas. And right now, the maxes add up to about twenty-two hundred homes, of only thirteen hundred of which can be built.
You really can't add, you have to do the subtraction, Mike, as we go through it. It's not an adding process, it's a subtraction process.
I understand completely, what I'm trying to do is give you a measure of how much flexibility he's asking for. He's, he's saying he's going to build thirteen hundred homes, but the max is add up to a little over twenty-two hundred. Which means he's got, you know, about a thousand that he can move around. In fact, he could put them all on the west side of the highway and put none on the east side, it fits.
That's not, that's not entirely true, because we know that there's not a single family residential on the periphery of the project already, and that's taken out of the thirteen hundred.
We haven't got to that point yet on these.
Yeah, all I'm saying is, I think as you move forward, we need to tighten, tighten these maxims up. So when you do that addition that I just did, you know, they, it, it gets closer to the, the, the project maximum.
Yeah, I have a total of one hundred ninety-five units left of what we've gone through so far, so.
Right, but, but they may not build all those maxes.
Right.
So, so the question is, how much do you want to be comfortable with moving around? And right now, you have about a thousand units that are in play, out of the thirteen hundred. So, and, you know, and admittedly, that's a bit of an extreme because of what Mike just pointed out. But I think with all these maxima, you need to gradually, as they better understand what you want, and as you better understand what they're trying to do, crank those down so that we have a more firm idea of what this is going to really end up with. You know, we have a, a workforce housing ordinance, we have a conservation subdivision ordinance. Those are both designed to create this kind of intense development as a reward for doing something the town wants. Whether it's providing workforce housing or providing open space. That give and take, I think, needs to happen here. So we're, the applicant is saying, you know, if you want the workforce housing, you know, it will do it, but it's at no cost to us. Well, that's not necessarily what the intent was of our, of our workforce housing ordinance, it was a quid pro quo. And so, you know, I don't think you need to be apologetic about asking for part of that if you, if you choose that thirteen hundred to be workforce housing. The concept is a, is a good one of having these maxima, it helps the developer, it helps the board. I, I would like to suggest adding two additional maxima, or, or minimum, as the case might be. One would be a maximum, and it could be project wide, to give him the most flexibility possible, of impervious surface. How much impervious surface do we want on this develop, that's a good measure of streets and rooftops. The second one would be a minimum, and, and as you know, I've been arguing for a long time to preserve as much of the state significant agricultural soils, prime agricultural soils. Can we set a minimum, and I would ask the applicant to propose a minimum of, of acres of that, that he can, he can manage to preserve by whatever clever means he, he comes up with in, in configuring his lots and, and his no cut areas or his, you know, no development areas.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you're welcome. Anyone else? Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize because I missed this, are you taking comments just on what you've done so far, or is there another comment period?
There'll be, be another comment period, or, yeah, at the very end, we'll have it.
I'll wait.
For, for everything, okay. This is just on W two one through five. And, would you, would you grab the microphone, please?
While Ann is coming down, I would like us to also just, you know for sure that you're going to do single family homes across the street from single family homes. So if we counted up all of those homes that you know for sure you're going to put, and subtract that out from thirteen hundred, then we have a figure that we're dealing with as far as manipulating it within those other areas. So, I mean, you don't have to do it right now, but I'm just saying for the next time, that's what we'll have.
Or when we get to those.
Right.
Real residential areas, what we call, we call real residential.
To make, to make it a simple arithmetic, we're showing possible eight hundred units on the east side of ninety-three. There may be none, that's, that's really the answer for the flexibility.
You might put thirteen hundred on the west side of?
No, there's, we're showing a possibility of eight hundred of the thirteen hundred being on the east side of ninety-three. But there may be none, or there may be a very small number, and then the.
Right, but I, I think what would happen, what would help, you know, those people in the audience who are looking at these different sections, is knowing that, say, a hundred are on the peripheral, okay? A hundred, so that, that means that twelve hundred are going to be within this, the defined area.
Well, that, we're, we're getting to that when we get to W two ten and the other peripheral areas, you'll see that the numbers have come down.
Yeah, because maybe we, once we get to there, then we can take those numbers and take them off the, well, that does raise a good question. What would that impact be if the E two dash one was totally commercial or retail to the thirteen hundred number?
The thirteen hundred still applies.
So that falls all on the west side then, all right.
Do you, do you have a number of how many of the homes are going to be one acre, how many are going to be half acre sized lots? How many are going to be in duplexes?
The only acre sized lots are going to be in W two ten and.
Two eight.
Two eight, okay, why don't we save that for when we get to get to that point, because I think Ann wants to do a talk.
Sure.
Go ahead, Ian, I didn't want to take your time, I just thought it would be a quick.
There's anything is quick.
My first question is about W two one. I noticed that for civic uses, a total of allowed a hundred twenty-five thousand square feet, and we're talking about school and churches and other things. I was wondering if you know what the square footage like a, a school like Matthew Thornton is?
Good question. Matthew Thornton's been one of the more evolving schools in town.
Well, I'd give you one dimensional thing, the orchard, just again, trying to figure square feet. The Orchard Building itself, the Woodmont Building, is about an acre, so it's about forty thousand square feet. So we're talking about civic uses three times the size of the Orchard Building, in total.
In total?
In total.
Okay, but does anybody know the, the amount of space that, how many square foot that either south or north or Matthew Thornton is?
Yeah.
Just because I bring up the fact that Kintlands, I believe, has a elementary, middle, and high school.
Yes, it does.
Within the development, and if we're allotting space for one small school, will that fit the needs of the community? Just a hundred twenty-five thousand square feet, when you add in any other civic uses like churches in that area, because it was mentioned, churches before and pictured.
I can check the, with the, the school as to what the size is, and we don't have any problem about increasing the number, I'll find out what a.
Just because it's the only space, the area where there is a school.
Yep.
So if it's, it's needed, instead of restricting it.
I'm not looking for this to look like Kintlands, that's.
No, no, but, but the question is if we do have a school, whether it be a, a small elementary school or something, I don't know how many square feet these things are.
Smaller than a hundred twenty-five thousand.
I have to go and check myself.
What I'll do is, I'll go and check.
Just because it says maximum a hundred twenty-five thousand for that area.
And.
Seventy-four thousand square feet.
And Lundonary Middle School's a hundred and sixty-three.
Matthew Thornton, okay.
And the middle school's a hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Okay, well, if we have a min, a maximum a hundred twenty-five thousand square feet, and that includes churches and anything else, it's.
Maybe we'll run up that number to two hundred or two fifty.
Well, I'm not, I'm not just saying propose a number now, but that's something you might want to look into. Um, let's see, one thing I was concerned about is, the area north of Pillsbury is originally primarily residential. And there seems to be an encroachment of commercial and retail up in that area.
So W two five?
Yeah, that we, the last area we were just talking about.
Yes.
Which isn't pictured in, in the, the hand, today's handout. None of that is pictured in today's handout. Something, something else that concerned me in that area is the lack of green space. There's going to be a, if, if what you're saying is true that the area in, that is east of ninety-three, the, what is it, W?
East of ninety, E two one.
Area contains most of the green space, then who's going to be using that green space if there won't be any residences over there? It seems like if we're going to have the residences on the west side of ninety-three, we should have the green space for the people who use the green space. I think that's part of what we're going to get to next, so I'll also. Okay, but we're, we're talking about the density of these houses, and there's, and the green space is not here.
Yeah, we are the, that detail yet, not just, you know.
I think what you're saying, though, is that on E two, two dash one, there's a significant amount of green space around.
Okay.
The conceptual.
Yeah, we haven't got to that yet, but.
Right, but we're talking about two five.
Which we have talked about.
Okay, so probably what we should be, what you're trying to say is we should be looking at green space in W two five.
Exactly, because we're touting this forty percent green space in the development, if, and it's all in an area where people aren't going to be able to access it, it's really not available to the residences.
Probably saying like a park, rec space, you know.
Where the houses are.
Yeah.
You're talking about a walkable community, well, you know, all that type of green space is where the people can recreate.
Yeah, if we get into further, further detail, we'll, we'll get to that, I know they're taking it in, so.
Right. Also, there's something else I'll bring up later at the next, next group of Ws, maximas. Let's see, let me just go through my list here. Like John said, I'd like to see pictured in these. And, and this, you know, someplace here indicated with those businesses are going?
We said we're going to do that, I said it had to be in there, and we're going to put it in, and the, the scope and scale that matches what the numbers are.
Right, because we do have where it was going before in the last plan, and that's been eliminated, so we'd like to see where it's going.
Yeah, this, this doesn't have the accuracy that we're talking about in the, the written, the written part.
Right.
Probably, because what I'm referring to mostly is this right here, this is the basic, basic zone, the zones.
Okay, I'll be back.
Okay, good, anyone else? Okay, we'll go to.
Art, can I make one comment?
Yes.
We were talking about civic buildings and schools and things like that. I would assume that if we built a school in that area, you'd be looking for the town to build that school. You wouldn't be building it out of the goodness of your heart.
No.
Right, no, so, no, and the point I'm going to make is that if, you know, I don't see a school being built in that area. We have, but we're under capacity as it is today. And if a school was to be built, there'd be something the town would be voting on as a referendum or as a warrant article. So, you know, the fact that it's being proposed here, I, I don't think we're going to see schools there.
I, the current declining school population and even the, the growth here, I, I don't expect us to reach capacity.
And in the past, the police station's been talked about, and you know, and I think the same thing applies to a police station or a fire station. If it happens, the town's going to have to vote on it as a town, and not as a Woodmont development.
Yeah, because I think that's a time of need.
Need a police station for any reason at all?
No, I don't see one either.
Yeah.
I think it might be a different.
Because I think it, I think it, as, as, it's going to be as it grows, and it's going to be over a good period of years. So there'll be plenty of time to.
There's a reason to have a substation.
I'd love to have, I'd love to have police officers in the, in the civic building, in the, if you make Woodmont Orchards building a civic building, I'd love to see a police officer, little office in there.
We've already talked with Chief Hart about that.
Yeah, that's, okay, Jack Feld, the, the microphone down here, please.
Thank you, Art. If you back out that visual, you'll notice that there's a lot of gray area out and around the facility. And the gray area as pictured on the handouts is what Lundonary is. And if you look at the density, compare one to the other, you can see what we are now and what's being proposed. Now, what we are now feeds into our current road system, so when we talk about thirteen hundred dwellings, people live in the dwellings. Not one person per dwelling usually, so we're talking a large number of people. And despite the fact that this is a walkable community, we are not a walkable area in this part of our state. We don't have mass transportation, we don't have concentrations of, of facilities, and by example, Century Village is very walkable. But every single resident of Century Village has an automobile, and they drive to their little post offices, and they drive back and forth. Now, you can walk from any place in Century Village to the grocery store and back again, but people drive. So now, if we multiply the thirteen hundred out in this area by, let's say, two, now we're talking vehicles. And we notice that all of these little squares here, and all of these where we casually mentioned five hundred units, we're talking in a thousand automobiles when we talk five hundred units, maybe eight hundred, right, or maybe fifteen hundred.
Yeah, we, we don't really know.
Correct, so the problem is that we're, we're asking the board to make a decision on a hypothetical, how many automobiles are going to be out there? And yet, those number of automobiles and the number of people living in the dwellings is a great concern to the people living around the area. So the density is not an abstract thing, oh yes, we're going to have less than six per acre, but in some places, we are going to have six per acre. That's just, that, that's all in abstraction. What you want to try and visualize is how many people, how many automobiles. And then, people don't store their automobiles on site, they drive them in and out twice a day. So as you go up and down Gilchrist and up and around Pillsbury, with the, with those little gray spots out and around the edges, those are filling up those roads during peak hours considerably. And that's very, very light density compared, if you just look at the gray versus the yellow. So I hope that we would look in terms of this thirteen hundred is a marvelous number for Michael to, to build his business model on. But there may be other business models that are not quite as profitable as the thirteen hundred for Michael, and for the way he wants to do it. But they might be a better number for the town.
Right, that's kind of what we're negotiating at, right now, we're at a very conceptual level, we've got thirteen hundred out there.
But I haven't heard any negotiations down from thirteen hundred or any suggestions, because that's stated as an absolute, we can't do it without.
Yeah, I mean, that's the absolute top, but I think, I think as we develop this master plan, that's when we start dealing with a little more reality. Then we get into doing some of the, the traffic, like overall traffic stuff. That'll, that'll probably. That'll, that'll probably give us a better, a better indicator.
But as we go, item by item here, or place by place, we're casually mentioning these numbers, and each time we mention them, it's always based on the thirteen hundred, and each little subdivision therein is part of that. So I think we wanna be careful that we don't make the assumption in the very beginning that this is the way it's gonna be.
Yeah, as far as we're concerned, it's not a hard number, I mean, it's a number they're looking at, it's a number that they've represented to us. It's a number as, as we get into the more detail of it, it's probably gonna diminish, you know, because what's gonna think, who really control it is traffic capacity, our ability to have.
On that note, your promise to diminish our, that's my case, thank you.
Okay. Not that we'll get there, but, but, uh, that's, uh, that's our aim, is something that's workable both for, for everyone. Okay, we'll, we'll continue with, uh, W two six.
W two six, this one should be fairly simple, famous last word. This is, uh, primarily the, the wet area that could be a pond. The idea is, this should be publicly accessible, passive recreation, with a small amount of, uh, maybe, um, retail such as, uh, it doesn't show on here, but there's a little island that's about two acres, and, uh, it shows on the other, on there. And whether we finally get, um, a full pond, whether we get a half pond, whether we get something. In the middle, there is a piece of land that is a very nice scenic piece of land, that would make sense to have, uh, walks and something. And the idea was, we wanna allow in this area, um. Some civic use, not to exceed five thousand, and some commercial recreation or restaurant business. And in the written portion, Mike was suggesting we, we limit it to like a, a thousand square feet of, um. Any sort of a, you know, maybe some kiosks around the, the edges, and maybels, maybe some sort of a commercial recreation, uh. You know, rental of kayaks or rental of, of something. But the, the idea here is, it's basically recreational, and we just wanna have a, a little ability to put something in there to sell, uh, you know, a hot dog or, uh, you know, rent bicycles or do something.
Or facilities, bathroom facilities, if it's a public area. Maybe a place to, to buy a bottle of water or a Coke or something like that. If you're, uh, if you're there and you're sitting and you wanna enjoy it and read or something like that. This is a suggestion made by, uh, somebody at, at our, at our workshops, and, and so we embraced it and we included it, and made it a separate category.
Maybe a mini library with a coffee place in there?
Pardon?
Just a joke.
This is the civic use, the library with the.
Question, uh, should, should this come to fruition? What would be the, is it just a walkway access or a bicycle access? No automobile, there are no automobile access to the island, correct?
What there is now is, for lack of a better description, there's a wide drainage ditch.
Okay.
Basically a manmade ditch, um, that sort of shows the edge of the island. So I would imagine that we'd have some sort of a bridge, that, you know, a, a service vehicle could go over, but not have cars or anything else on it.
I, I, I'll tell you what I'm struggling. Um, it, it sounds good, great, you know, go get a hot dog and a coffee and we'll bike around, and some will be out on this five thousand square foot facility that's gonna sell us something. We might have ten feet of snow out there. I mean, I mean, you see what I'm saying, I mean, is this a practical use and, 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 and putting that type of, or allowing that type of use on an island that?
We were thinking seasonal.
So something like.
And we were also thinking of winter, we were thinking ice skating.
Who maintains this?
Who maintains it?
Who, yeah, who's gonna maintain it? Us, the town?
Whoever, I'm.
The project.
I was, I was thinking the project and then the users, the kiosk owners would, uh, would support taking care of it, but, uh, if you, uh, you know. We don't have to do it.
No, I understand, but, but I'm, I'm thinking about, I mean, we had a, an awful lot of snow this year, right, and it might, might.
It would make sense that if you're, if you have kiosks, and you could lease them, you could build in CAM charges or, or, or triple net maintenance agreements with the users to take care of it. And then it would be the responsibility, whoever, quote unquote, own, own the island or the community can police it and lease out the properties and reap the income, and then use that as a, as a way to, uh, as a way to pay for whatever maintenance there is to it. There's a million ways to do it, it's just a suggestion.
Yeah, but I think we're a ways from looking at, at that part of it yet.
It's just, it's just a suggestion, and that's why we included it.
Just to, just to.
It's a nice, it's a nice thing to do.
Just to clarify, Mike, when you say community, you're talking about the Woodmont development, not the community at large.
That's what I think.
I have a question, is this land usable for anything else but water?
Oh, excuse me, but water, no.
I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I see it's a pond, but is that because you don't have a choice, really?
It's, it, it would be dual function as a pond, it would help, help the drainage system quite a bit by making a pond.
Okay, but there's no, there's no creek leading into it, there's no, I mean, is it?
There's a lot of water going.
There is, there is a, sort of a seasonal stream that comes from the other side of Pillsbury, down through here.
Okay, so it won't be stagnant water?
No, and there's a little dam down about there.
Yeah, a little beaver dam down where that house.
Oh, no, exactly, right there.
Yeah. It's closer to the road.
So, so is there a possibility this will dry up?
It hasn't, it'll.
Depends how deep they dig.
It's a dredging aspect, uh, we've been told by DES, who was, who was involved in the original, in the original municipal charrette. You understand there were two charrettes, in the municipal charrette, and they categorically told us that they believe that we could get the island and the periphery without too much trouble. Uh, there has to be ongoing negotiations with Army Corps to get the entire thing, but people feel that it's not, that it's doable. It would be a tremendous amenity for the community to have, um, if it works. Um, but, you know, it's, it's all a matter of what's the process to get it. I'd love to have it, because I think it'd be a tremendous amenity for the community, and I'd be a, I'd be the guy responsible for dredging it, but it'd be a tremendous asset to the entire project.
Does, does that feed into the pond on Gilchrist, on the side of Gilchrist? This is the little pond with the weir, I think, uh, Mike was talking regards.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's.
I've never seen that well, and last year it was full of water, and through, through summer time, I have a pond on my property, it was down four feet. So it seems to be well fed.
That also drains the entire watershed for, uh, Woodmont.
Okay, so I don't wanna get into the muckety-muck details of it right now, but like on another, um, another section, and forgive me, I can't remember the section we discussed before, where, uh, we talked about, if not this, then something else. Is that something, maybe, Tim, we should build into, if there's not a, a, a water source here, what can it be? And, and I'm not saying we have to do that now, but.
Yeah, it's, it's passive recreation.
It's either a water course, or it's a, it's a.
Or it's a golf course.
Or it's, no.
Any of that. Golf course.
It's a wet area.
It's, it's a wetland.
Is only to improve its enhanceability to, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh.
Okay, so that, that'll then be noted.
To, or to, or to, to, uh, make it a better environmental mix, uh, mix with the, uh, what's, what's already there. There could never be anything.
Okay, uh, common of religious facilities, uh, by federal law, we have to allow them in all areas. That goes back to the year two thousand.
Where you have, like, assemblies, yes.
Yeah. So we can't say, no.
Well, they're allowed in the project, but we, we thought it might not be appropriate to build a church in the wetland.
Any other questions, uh, further questions to the board? Okay, we'll go to the next one.
Okay. The next one, uh, I'm gonna skip out of order, go to two eight first, and then two seven. Two eight is the residential corridor along Gilchrist. And in this area, we're saying there, uh, one, we're gonna match the house across the way. And two, there could be a, a total of up to ten units in this particular area.
It's one per acre.
So ten acres, ten units.
Yeah, and you, you can't do hotels, can't do retail, can't do professional offices, can't do civic. The only thing you could do was, um, a home occupation. So it's basically, two eight is your, is your residential buffer. And then, just take it in, moving beyond, 'cause there, it's all one, in one place. Two point seven then, what, uh, will also be residential, no, um. You know, it's, it's a residential use, and depending on what happens with the water. If, if the, we only get, say, a half a pond, a sort of a horseshoe around the island. It, this would just be, um, housing. If the water was there, we tried to have some connections along the, the water, and maybe in the same thing we were talking about. Maybe allowing some other, um, use there on the edge of the water. We had up to ten thousand square feet, but again, it's a, the idea is that if, um, if there's a pond, that becomes a very, um. Attractive place, we may wanna have, you know, commercial recreation things or, or, um, a rest. We may wanna have, uh, you know, that may end up being the place where we have paddle boats or some things. I think it, somewhere along the edge, we're gonna have it, and maybe it's there, you know, maybe it's somewhere else, but we're just leaving the option.
We're thinking of the nice elder, uh, elder, elderly house, I guess, because it would have proximity of water and be peaceful, and would be things like that, if it comes to fruition. If not, strictly residential.
There's no access to W two one though, from there, right?
Say again?
There'll be no access to W two one?
Well, there's a, there's a.
Could be a walk there.
But I think, I think in earlier conversations, that there's no walkway to there.
Well, we're, we're, we're anticipating going to the, those people and asking if we can build a, a walkway through there.
Yeah, they own the, they own the southern end of the. Yeah, they own the southern end of the wetland, their, their line pretty much is the edge of the wetland.
I think you could, you could walk this way. Or you could walk around.
We can walk around, but going to the southern end, we'd have to get okay from, uh, Lundonary Commons.
But we've always envisioned having pathways all the way around that, that water course.
How, why do you anticipate this to be, if it is built as big as it is shown? At the bottom, how wide in the southern part?
That is probably, uh, just doing a very scientific thing here, it is probably, uh, nine hundred feet wide. You know, from, sorry, W two seven to W two one, about nine hundred feet.
It's substantial. If you look at the aerials, you can go on the G I S of the town, you can, you can visualize it very easily, it's a, it's a large area.
So.
And, and the apple trees are, are along W two eight?
W two A are apple trees, right?
So we got three, was it three rows, I think, we talked about?
We never defined it, but.
Okay.
Up to you.
Buffer.
Part of the buffer.
We showed a buffer on there.
Yeah.
Art, do you mind if I just quickly ask, I noticed that someone has been pruning those trees and taking lately, you, you guys have taken care of that?
That's nice.
Thank you.
Uh, does the board like, uh, the three rows of trees along there for the buffer? I think we've, uh, covered this once before, but just, uh, make, make doubly sure, we're, we're comfortable with it. Yeah, okay.
Before we finalize that, can I just double check how deep that goes?
Okay, uh, I'm just visualizing three rows of trees, you know, yeah.
But in one part, the trees are very far back, maybe we have to plant some near, when you go along Gilchrist, the first place, you know, the trees.
Right up against another place, they're almost a hundred feet back, so we'd have to, we'll have to determine. I mean, I don't have any problems relocating some of the trees.
I'd be more appropriate to have a, a defined size with, width with a number of trees with.
Chris is correct, yeah.
Rather than what's there right now.
It's not like we couldn't relocate trees as well.
Yeah.
We do it.
I, I think.
We do it all the time.
Keep that buffer there, and also keep it seen it, because I think that's.
It's important.
It's a hallmark of the town, you know, having that row, nice row of trees down Gilchrist.
It's important for us as well.
So, any thoughts on?
The other concern that, uh, had been raised about that area two was the number of curb cuts, that it looks like on your plan, you've got that down to like two with a loop road. Yeah, okay.
Okay, any other questions for the board? Okay, next.
Okay, so we've gone through seven and eight, um, the next one, two nine. Two nine is basically the corner of Gilchrist and, um, and Pillsbury. And again, this is, we're trying to have a residential with some civic uses comparable with the surrounding place. Again, one of the questions is what happens on the edge of the pond? The idea here is to have up to twenty-five units in this area. And here's another one of the places where, you know, your choice, uh, somebody mentioned, geez, that might be a nice place, sort of where it juts into where the pond is, to go and have a, uh, have an inn, uh, you know. And so, you know, if you think an inn would be good there, we add it in, if you don't, we take it out. But we're thinking of the same category, the twenty-five, thirty-room, you know, a smaller inn maybe on the, um, looking out over the water. In that location.
And the water there is more realistic than the entire pond, because we've already been told by DES, that's more of the reality than the entire pond, but we're going for the entire pond.
Yeah, and the other thing there is we'd allow civic uses up to five thousand square feet. We'd also allow, and we'd limit it again, the commercial recreation with the same idea, we're talking about, you know, we're not sure where the water goes, and, you know, there might be things like the, the paddle boats or the kayaks, something, have some little thing there.
Seasonal activity.
Yeah, we don't know whether it would fit in two nine, two seven, or, or two six, but around the edge of the water, somewhere there is gonna make sense to have, if we have water, to have access. And so, we're allowing it in here, but with, you know, if it doesn't make sense here, you know, be in a different place, so.
Yeah, I think, to me, the proximity to the residential areas, I think it, even a small inn might be a little too much. It'd look more like a bed of breakfast type place along the, the edge, I mean, that's only my opinion, and the.
I, you're talking like a twenty-five room type?
Yeah, like a twenty-five, again, think, think Bedford Village in size or some of that. Uh, we're talking about, um, fifteen acres.
Fifteen acres, so you could have maybe a couple of residential units up front and, uh, leading to another use in the back.
This is, it, they, basically directly across from the Sugar Plum Project, is directly across, uh, Gilchrist in this location. So there is slightly higher density directly across the street than there is in other parts of Gilchrist here.
John?
Yeah, I, 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 as, as looking at this and, and understanding that area, 'cause I travel that area a lot, um, I, I would strongly recommend that we do nothing more than what we have in W two eight. From, from a, from a, a, a usage standpoint. And there, and again, the reason to that is I think it, it, it fits the area, and then if you start talking about any other type of uses, you know, you're, you're, you're really already gonna have a congested area there, no matter what we do from a intersection standpoint, and all that's gonna do is just increase that.
We could also split it like we did two seven and two eight, and have the stuff right against the road be the one acre, and maybe you see about, maybe a little bit different on the water.
I'm more concerned about the usage requirements, or the, the, the request than, than I am from a, a, more of a density issue.
You know, we, we carried it as residential, uh, originally, and we were, we were asked, uh, the, uh, the, the things to consider as, uh, as something a little, a little more, uh, and that's the reason we approached it this way.
Master.
And so if the board says they want a single family residential, we're happy with it.
Yeah.
We just thought we should have the flexibility in case.
How's the board feel?
I think the residential component would be good there, too, I'd prefer to see any of the commercial development on the water be toward W two one on that side of the pond, as opposed to the other side.
The key thing for me would be, keep, I mean, I really do, that's a great feature, that water, I think, is gonna make a lot of what else goes on palatable to a lot of people in town, frankly. It's a very nice feature for the town, and I think that if we can maintain public access, you know, ringing the pond, then that would be great, and I think, might get tricky if you had, maybe it wouldn't, maybe you could just accommodate everybody's wishes, but I think I'd probably wanna keep that on.
It'd be easier with less complaints if it was an inn there or something along those lines.
Maybe so.
Residents will always complain about people walking in their backyard, always.
Well, that's, that's.
That was the other reason for it. Because you're gonna, you're gonna have, it's going to be attract, when that goes in, it probably will be attractive. I mean, residentially, it's going to be a wonderful place to live. So it's.
And we're talking about still maintaining the apple trees along the property?
No problem.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it being an inn in that area. I think that's.
I don't either. I, I personally think that's a better spot for the type of inn we're talking about than the other area. Because being near the water, that's going to be a tremendous draw for people that want weddings, stuff like that.
The, the road that's right next to the old market basket that's going to go straight through. I believe is going to take a tremendous amount of traffic off of Gilchrist.
Correct, it will.
And although, you know, and John drives it, I drive it because I go to work every single day up that road. And during baseball season, from five o'clock until seven o'clock, it's, the line is tremendously long. But I imagine people will find places, ways around it. And while I appreciate what you're saying as far as traffic is concerned, I think that you might have people coming and staying for three or four days and not traveling out of there. You know, especially if it's like a wedding, because they could be walking to their destinations in the village where they're getting their nails done and whatever else they're doing, you know. I, I don't know, I think it might, it might be a nice alternative to having single family homes. There's, if there's 15 acres, 15, you know, 15 homes.
I'd like the, the option of it as a placeholder and we can consider it in more detail at some point. That's not saying it's written in stone, but I'd like to have the option of considering it for this section.
We're not locked in, whatever it is here, this is, you know, we're going with the concepts. And we're later going to come in with the master plan. And if that time, you know, we decide, take it out, then it comes out.
So residential and an inn would be.
Yeah, I think we're comfortable leaving it as a placeholder.
Yeah.
Because I know even residential areas, you know, like 20, 25 homes can generate a lot of traffic daily in and out all the time. So it's.
Okay, then the.
We're one to the other, I guess, for the traffic generation.
Yeah, we got them out.
Okay.
We'll take the others out and we'll limit those two.
Yeah, okay. The, the other thing now, the W two 10, that's just a buffer. Same rules as.
Same as W two eight, uh, two.
Eight.
Yeah, two eight, same as two eight, you know, that's, that's, that's basically a buffer.
They'll have a buffer and single family dwellings.
You know, no commercial, no.
I mean, of one acre each.
It's actually less than.
Less than one acre.
So would you take this business component completely off the descriptions then? Except for home occupation?
W two 10?
Yeah, I'm looking at W two 10 and it says agriculture, bed and breakfast, homestay and home occupation. Do you, if it's just going to be single family homes, do you want to have a? Bed and breakfast to me is more than one family in that house, you know, I mean, it's a bigger facility.
Bed and breakfast, and we don't feel strongly one way or the other, but bed and breakfast is something that is allowed in, you know, anybody's, you know, home.
And that's after four bedrooms, so didn't we have that?
The home occupation, I go back to, I go back to the home occupation issue, you know, we should treat everybody the same that, you know, one person can have an, an office and the house, somebody else should be able to.
So maybe, so we take the business uses out that.
Yeah, do, do you want to take bed and breakfast, homestay out? We can do that.
Oh, no, I think since it's allowed.
Those are the only businesses that are allowed.
The only businesses.
We basically say nothing else is allowed. The only thing you'd have would be bed and breakfast or a home occupation.
And a farm. And a little farm.
Okay.
Well, agriculture.
Air one.
Okay. Then, the next one along that's very similar, and we might as well just, because it's a simple one to go.
It'll be the same as W two 10, W two 11.
Yeah, we, we go to.
W two 13.
Well, we go to W two 11, okay? W two 11 is again residential. And, you know, no hotels, no other, no other things are allowed here except the ones that are in W two 10.
Concern I get on this one was the number of units. The number of units on this one, because this is a buffer up against.
Two point eleven.
Single family homes, which are acre lot areas.
Well, it's, it's both. It, it's somewhat internal and somewhat external.
Yeah, but on the north side and on the west side, they're all, you know, those are single family homes right there.
The idea would be here to, when we set it up, is to have, you know, matching with matching along the edges. But this is the place where if foray ever would go in, you may have a higher use sort of on the fringe that get closer to where the, the road would be. But we would have along the edges, the same way we do everywhere else, you know, we'd have the single family.
Well, the lots, the lots that abut other people are bigger, or it's a green, or it's a bigger lot. As soon as you get more internal, then the lots get smaller.
I guess I'd want to see that articulated in there that, you know, written into, into this one that, you know, where it's adjacent to other acre lots, it's acre lot.
Okay.
Is the board comfortable with that?
Okay. W two 12 without foray is basically single family, two family, elderly housing, mixed use residential for a total of 120 units. No hotels, we would allow a service establishment of maybe 5,000 feet, maybe an, an office space of 10,000, civic use of 15. And so this, what, if you, W two 12 pokes into where W two five is. And what you could envision is that there be a, another one of these modules, sort of, that we talked about in W two five. A, you know, a neighborhood module of some sort. And I think also going along with, you know, John comments before, we can go look at the, the list of things there and have them more. Yeah.
And this is one of the ones that would not be built until, you know, down the path quite a ways. And you'd know what was going on with exit four by the time that came to pass.
Yeah, you know, if, yeah, we'd.
Well, no, this is, this is without, this is without foray.
Yeah.
Right, but given that you just have the, the option.
Well, we're taking the option out at this stage.
The, the option is if foray comes in, come back and talk to you.
Yeah, we come back.
So, John, if I heard you correctly, you're saying that pretty much W two 12 would align with W two five?
Sort of the ones you're saying, take a closer look at the items and, you know, some things like assembly and some of those things, you know, take out.
The one, the concern I've got about this one is, is the, you know, you're stretching out the retail commercial up further up, up into the spa there where, you know, if foray didn't occur. It seems to be even more straightforward, there would be all residential encompassing and that the retail would be closer down in, you know, if you do have it down in two five.
Probably more of a main highway or a well-traveled area where people, you know, it's easier for people, whether as they pass by, wherever they're going, they can stop in a little convenience store or something.
Yeah, more.
More field.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But what we, what you try to do on these things is have ideally five minute walk, maybe 10 minute walk from little nodes. And so the, the idea here is to go from, you know, W two one, when we get out of there, in W two five, we should have some sort of little commercial node, you know, within about a five minute walk. And then from there, another five. And I, I know when there was a, somebody drew some circles on a plan that, you know, five, five minutes probably gets you into the, up into the, where the two is a W two five. And maybe another five gets you into two on the other one. And if you're going to have walkable, these types of neighborhoods, you try to have some little nodes. And that's what the, that's what the concept is.
Neighborhood retail.
Okay, because I'm thinking too much with automobile traffic, I usually operate, but, you know, having a, like a little convenience store, like in walking distance from your house or something.
And the offices, John had mentioned before in the W two five, we should just go and make those, in my new word, officy as opposed to the, you know, some of the other uses. And I'll go down and go through that.
So if we put, can you put T N D one up there for a second? The area you're probably talking about is right where the law, you've got the circle there.
Yeah, where the circle is, and then what they say is probably down at the next big crossroad down, you know, there. If you're talking five minute nodes, there should be a little something around there also. And that's about a five minute walk from one to the other.
That's a, that circle's kind of somewhere along Hovey Road, right?
You're going to have, in other words, on that stretch.
Probably.
Nor, you're going to have a couple of nodes where people can have services, dry cleaners, things like that. And still be within walking distance of their homes. Still encouraging people to get out of their cars and walk.
Board, comfortable with that? I think Chris favors more, more residential, but, you know, I think we got to look at a little, well, at least keep it, keep it open for, this is not going to happen till.
Yeah, I will come in with, as we go to the next stage, modify it a little bit more as discussed.
John?
To Chris's point, if you, if you go to the colored map.
Do you want to do Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you drew a line from the bottom of, of W two 11 down to W two 13, straight across. I think, Chris, what you're saying is that if foray doesn't happen, that portion of W two 12 should be residential, residential only. And the remainder of W two 12 that falls into W two five would be W two five.
Yeah, we'd use that, yeah.
Right.
Okay, but then we would change one, I think, we want to remember, we want to have a couple of nodes. And right now, the second node would be probably right in the area you're lopping off. We want to have a node right where he's showing there, some sort of use, and then another one down, probably halfway back to Pillsbury. So when you, if you cut off, as you suggest, W two two, just in terms of we were to go and do that. Two twelve. Then we would make sure that there was enough spa, enough things in there to do two little commercial nodes. One up, probably right at, you know, where Hovey Road would be.
I think, I think it would help the board graphically if the yellow extended down around and connected around the perimeter, like it does over here.
Okay.
So, make that change and then the, the mixed use can happen somewhere in here.
More, yeah, internal and then it's probably more convenient.
Buffer off trolley car lane as well, yeah.
Okay. Bye. Next one along is two 13, which again is, this one's pretty simple. Again, it's another, it's another buffer zone. This would allow up to 42 units, no hotels, no retail.
We get the trees.
We do allow some civic uses. But otherwise, it's just like the rest of our, our buffers.
We get the trees along the heavy road there.
And I think this is another one, Chris, where you probably want to see the language that the directory matches.
Yeah, yeah, because that's got a fair density on it.
Yes.
Forty-two and 13 acres, so there's a couple of brand new houses along that road that would bump right up against, they wouldn't be too happy.
Yes.
Then the, you know, beyond the buffer, then we go to the other side of the highway. And this is the area that we've thought that this is going to be a, be much more commercial. It'll, might have up to 650,000 square feet of retail, might have up to seven office buildings, 7,000 square feet. But remember, anything we put down on the, call it the village side, you know, we can't do on, on the other. This gives us the flexibility to have some of these things on one side of the road or the other. Civic uses, we have up to 15,000 square feet. And the more, just looking at it right now, I think that number's, you know, too low. We should have a, we should have a higher number in there for some sort of, you know, civic uses, parks, you know, churches or some other things. You know, maybe we should have a number close to 100,000 square feet. And that just gives us the ability to have some civic things.
Well, parks wouldn't, these are civic building structures, really.
Yeah, but if it's some civic uses, churches, something, you know. The hospital is not allowed on this side, business uses to 650 are. So this is, this is going to be the place that's the more commercial. We would allow up to 800 housing units. How much goes in and what's the mix is going to depend on sort of what's happened with the village as it goes, you know, how many we use. I think we would like to ideally have some housing mixed in here, you know, what the mix is. This is probably going to be the second area.
Yeah, I think we have to pay attention to that because along the northern, northern border, this is residential. And I think we got to, you know, properly buffer it.
Buffer.
Yeah, and also on the, on the south side.
These ones on there for the power. I was figuring that's why those green areas were, were theirs, because you couldn't do anything with those.
Yeah, and in here, the, the plan depicts maybe a little bit of residential, call it in the, the upper right hand corner. You know, sort of the, the little part that sticks out, maybe have residential in there.
I don't know, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, and that also would be near the area where if we had a, if the train ever came through, that'd be the train station. And that would be some commercial things around there.
Yep, real riderways right there.
And, you know, and we also envisioned in this area above retail residential. So, and we're back to, you know, a true mixed use residential above retail or residential above office or office above retail.
You want to get rid of the drive-throughs in there too?
I think it'd probably be better to have them over there than anywhere else.
Well, if the whole idea is to have a walkable community.
We don't have, we don't have anywhere else. And maybe right off the highway might be just like four.
They think they can walk up to the front of the window.
If and foray goes in.
Foray is going into the west, on west, I mean, to the east.
Yeah, it's on the eastern side.
That's, that's, that's something that's, that's on the top of the list for the 10 year plan. And if you heard the governor speak last week at the chamber, it's his number one priority.
And the number one priority of the Senate Transportation Committee. So the, the chief Democrat and chief Republican were both, at least in terms of foray, saying, you know, top priority is 93 and foray.
Foray is.
Is that a power line corridor, the dotted lines?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes.
With 220 acres on this side and, and assuming foray goes through, easy access to foray, why, why would you not consider a hospital for this side?
Just in talking to people, people kept saying they didn't want to see it over here. I have no problems with having a hospital on this side, then whatsoever. It's just people decided they wanted it on this side.
We can put it in even as a placeholder or something.
I, I think it's worthy of consideration since, I mean, if you're talking congestion and traffic alleviation, I mean, I, I mean, right on and off the highway, it's right there. I don't know, it's, I'm sorry. True.
Yeah, so maybe we'll.
Worth of considering.
The hospital in for a placeholder?
I don't think it's a bad place.
Even, even, even a hotel over there.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Hotels we have room.
Versus the place where it was proposed in W two four, is my point. You're hoarding it down in there where there's not much ready access versus putting it across the highway.
Yeah, would be more, more sense.
I would just want it to be considered, I'm not, I'm not suggesting.
We'll add, we'll add the hospital, no problem.
Any? Just a quick question.
Yes.
Sorry, when I, I, Mr. Page apparently, but it seemed like for a while that was going to be more big scale development. And I was surprised to hear you just say stuff above stores, which makes me think of smaller scale retail.
I don't envision a mall here, so there's still, if there's going to be retail, it's going to be street level.
Okay, that's, that's different from what I had, I was thinking, you know, Kohl's and Targets and things like that.
That's never been our goal.
Okay.
Our goal is to keep it street level and keep it open and open air, so.
Do you expect this to look a lot different than the village center down? Do you expect this to look a lot different than the Village Center down on?
I do. It will have a different look, there's no question about it.
How so, more trees?
Like Bedford.
It'll be more, it'll, it'll, no.
More national retailers, for sure.
National retail. This is where your Bed Bath, your TJ, your, all those kinds of boxes would go with retail above, I mean, with office or, or residential above.
I can't, I can't think of a place like that. And I'm not doubting you, I'm just trying to think of one where you would have, like, TJ Maxx with offices or apartments above it.
Burkeville.
Target, Burkeville in North Carolina.
Oh, well.
We're talking about putting residential above Target in Chelsea, Massachusetts.
Okay. All right, interesting.
You're not envisioning anything like an outlet store setup, thank you.
No.
Okay, Board have any questions? Nope, I'll go open to the public for any, anything, and I'll still, Board still can just let me know, and go to you, so. Andrew's got a microphone up here, if anyone's got any questions or comments on, like, everything we had discussed. I know some people wanted to reserve time for comments, so. Get the floor mic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for the opportunity to allow the public to speak.
Mike Brown for the record.
I'm sorry, Mike Brown, five-carrousel court, my apologies. Just some general comments, and these, this may be stating the obvious. I think going forward that if the Board and the development team can keep size, scale, use, and look in mind as kind of an overriding theme to everything that you do, the decisions that they ask you to make, the decisions you ultimately make, if you can keep the size and the scale and the use and the look in mind across the entirety of the project as a whole, and then within each W, I think you're, you're gonna end up with something that's more amenable and acceptable, even to those who would prefer to not see, who prefer to see the orchard. I would, I'm really pleased to see urban replaced with village. I was very disturbed by the whole urban concept at the original Charette, wish it hadn't been presented that way, but it was. I'm very pleased to see that it's been replaced with a village concept, 'cause I think that's more in fitting with what we are. My personal preference is to have that village concept be New England-style and nature, whatever that is. It's hard for me to pick it out and go, "That," but I'm gonna say it, New England-style village.
I think that's what we're gonna, we're gonna work on.
Yeah, okay. Really glad the whole plop in the city down in the town has been removed, not a good idea, in my personal opinion. Personally, I do prefer that there's an established maximum proposed number of units. And I say proposed because I think some valid points were brought up by a couple people that, while that's the model that, that Mike wants to move forward with, you know, as a business person, I think it's incumbent upon the Board to also keep that in mind, that when the traffic studies come forward and data's presented to you, that if ultimately that model doesn't work, moving down from that number is perfectly fine, and I think you're obligated to do so. I did have a question for staff relative to the whole residential part. Is the residential component, does it fall under the existing phasing ordinances that we have?
Unless otherwise modified as part of the master plan that is approved by the Board, yes.
Okay, so that's the key caveat. Personally, I strongly, strongly, strongly recommend you stick to the existing phasing ordinance for this project. I would not want you, as my Board, to entertain exempting that. And there's lots of reasons for it, which I won't get into. It's a key component to handling this going forward, in my mind. I really agree with what John said, and I know there's some, there's some dissenting opinions on the Board, which is fine. I think that whole W two nine, the intersection of Gilcrest and Pillsbury, should be residential, like two eight. Yes, the concept of an inn is nice and the water's nice, but I think if you stick to the concept of retaining the residential buffer at all costs, you can't go wrong. If you fool around with that area, that borders it, it's problematic. It's just not worth it. I would keep it residential. Again, this is all my personal opinion, I'm just one person here, I'm not an expert in any of this. And I appreciate you giving me the chance to share that with you. Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Mary.
Mary, you weren't here earlier, but we did mention your email.
About workforce housing.
All about affordable housing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna speak to, Mary T. Tro fifteen, Isabella. I think it's really important that we have some affordable housing as part of this plan. I'm disappointed that in the way the plan has been presented with thirteen hundred units, it's like, oh, well, if you want affordable housing, it's gonna have to be like, you know, fourteen hundred units. Seems to me to be a negative way, an easy way to exclude affordable housing when people are concerned about the density of the project already. However, I believe that our children, our grandchildren, our workforce, our police officers, our town planners, our town clerks, people who work hard, should be able to afford to live in Londonderry. When I moved here twenty-four years ago, it was way cheaper to live here than Massachusetts, way cheaper. But sometimes there isn't such a differential anymore. I grew up in a beautiful town of Lexington, Mass. It's a gorgeous town, lovely. I graduated from high school in nineteen seventy-seven, there were seven hundred kids in my class. Of them, I know of four that live in Lexington. I mean, if you wanna live in Lexington, buy a ranch house, maybe on a quarter acre of land with these fabulous schools, it could cost you like seven hundred thousand bucks. I mean, it's crazy. And I don't want our town to become a town, I know there've been proposals for workforce housing, and people act as though it's a dirty word. Workforce housing is something that we should be proud of and try to, you know, foster in our town. I mean, we can't be saying, you know, maybe we came here twenty-five years ago and got a hun, a house for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Now we're looking at our children who can't live here because the houses cost four hundred thousand dollars. And even if this project brings our housing values down, which I'm not saying it will, but even if it brings it down, there will not be affordable housing. And I am outraged when I see things like proposals for apartments for basically a pretty small amount of workforce housing. I'm outraged to see people rear up like it's some ugly thing to have apartments that could be affordable to somebody who makes twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars a year. So I, I asked the Board and the developers to consider the affordable housing, because it shouldn't be something buried like, you know, let's hide it under the rug. Well, the only way we're gonna mention this is that it's, you know, the unwanted a hundred units of affordable housing, or a hundred, another hundred units of elderly housing. Well, this isn't such a good way to present it, Mike, because you're putting it in a negative way. You're saying, you're, people are here and they're shocked already with the number of units, but we can see you've been working with us, I haven't been here for a few meetings. I think you've made great progress, I applaud you on that. I mean, I really think you've done a wonderful job working with the townspeople, and that you deserve a lot of credit for that. But I think the issue of affordable housing shouldn't be swept under the rug. It should be something that we are proud to offer in Londonderry. And that if we're gonna have twelve, is it twelve hundred, thirteen hundred, what's the number?
Thirteen, thirteen.
Okay, if we're gonna have thirteen hundred units going in, I don't think it would kill us to have twelve hundred units of affordable housing, I mean, one hundred units of affordable housing.
I think it probably would've killed him, maybe started to have a heart attack when he said drop it.
It's late for me, it's late. Yeah, so if we had twelve hundred units going in, well, this is a wonderful opportunity. We're developing a really great place here. I mean, and there's apartments and stuff, you know, it's supposed to be for young people who are gonna be making lower salaries if you start in your career. I think that we should look at the question, not as though affordable housing or elderly housing is swept under the rug and it won't be considered because thirteen hundred is too many already. I think we should be saying, okay, thirteen hundred is the number, that's given, but why don't we have fourteen hundred and fifty units with a hundred and fifty units of affordable housing? I think this is a really important issue, and I think, you know, we gotta look at it. Our kids can't afford to live here, I mean.
Sure they can, they live with us.
Well, one thing I could say about my wonderful stepkids is they went off to college and they never moved back into the house.
Wow.
But they're older kids, so, anyway, that's my little rant about affordable housing.
Yes, I think most of this is probably, you know, it's gonna develop after we've someplace else. And it's our kids, it's really the twenty-somethings that this is, this is for.
We've had so many young people come to our workshops and say that they want to live in the community, but they can't afford it. And it's one of the reasons that, that I'm such a strong advocate for having workforce housing integrated into the, into the various densities that are here, because it's easy to be inclusive when you're building it. It's very easy to make it inclusive, and it's not costly at, at that time. But, again, you know, as my, as my representative said, maybe I'll go out on a limb and say ten percent. Well, I'm not opposed to it. And, and that number is in sync with what that is, so I think that's a, that's a good thing. If we could end up with a hundred and thirty units of workforce housing in this project, that would be a tremendous asset for the community. 'Cause I don't make money on workforce housing.
Anyone else? Ian, you're the.
Anne Champa, which would drive? I'm looking at W two twelve without four A. Why is the roundabout in there if there's no four A in there? It's disrupting Hovey Road traffic that's a thruway there. Limited speed thruway, but that's just gonna serve to slow traffic down for the residents in, on the Hovey Road side.
That's the idea.
That's the idea, to slow the traffic down.
Traffic's, what is it, thirty, thirty-five in that area now?
Probably not the real limit.
Laugh all you want, there's cops sitting there waiting for you, so you shouldn't be going any faster.
As it goes through a new residential area, it would act as a calming area to keep people from building speed.
Yeah, it's a planning, planning tool and engineering tool. I guess it's more, I guess, because I think people realize you really can't have that level of enforcement without the expense to keep people's speeds down, so you design the roads to, what they call calming, to slow the speeds down.
So how come we don't have it on Hardy Road on Gilcrest now? I mean, they're all the same speed. Why are we putting them in for this development and not?
I think originally there weren't houses on those roads.
Were, were, were houses there, and the thing is, this is being planned as a, as a unit, the whole area, so then you can do things like, like that.
Just wanted to make note that at this point, staff has not really paid a particular amount of attention to the roadway network itself. We've been concentrating solely on land use.
Okay.
When we get through land use and we start talking about traffic and transportation network, those are the issues staff will be examining much more greater detail.
Yeah, yeah, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, I'm kinda like everyone else. I have to apologize.
Well, I kind of look at it, though, as like an Otterston, where you have, you know, you have a definite place that, a destination that people will wanna cut through, and so they do have the stop signs and the roundabouts so that people will slow down and not speed through the neighborhoods.
People put down a speed bump, so slowly, Duncan, don't.
But I do it every day, and people are racing through there.
Yeah.
You know, there's houses there now. It seems just like an accommodation for our retail stores, to me. If exit four A is not going in in this picture, why do we have a two-to-four-lane road going into trolley car lane?
Yeah, I don't think we're at that point to.
We're not at that point.
In the picture.
Yet.
We're looking at the picture.
It's a picture, it hasn't been designed.
Yeah, I'm taking that front page is only a picture and not, not reality. The reality is the writing, written word right here, so far.
Okay, I went to the plant, to the Woodmore and Archers meeting on Saturday, and it was mentioned by Mr. Michaels that exit four A West, it will be a reality, 'cause the federal government will require it. If, if four A goes east, it'll go west.
Well, we don't know.
Mary was there.
Yes, because things are probably progressing. We, at this point, I mean, I, I don't know anyway, you know, I don't think we know until, one, the money's been appropriated to, to do the widening of ninety-three, 'cause they, they have no money to build ninety-three north of Windham.
Well, that's, that's what was mentioned at the meeting on Saturday by John.
I know where that came from, and I can be very specific about it. In nineteen, in two thousand and seven, the federal government mandated that there be access to the, to the, to the west. They built it as a four, as a four-way quadrant with access. They're not building it, but it's gonna be there, and it's gonna dead-end right on the ramps. And they mandated that it has to be addressed. Now, it doesn't get looked at or approved or anything else until there's another complete FEIS, just like there was for the west, and that in, east, excuse me. And that, and that, that would be something that the community would have to participate in and sponsor. So, that's, that's in the future. I, as a private developer, I can't mandate anything when it comes to federal highway or access to a federal highway, nor can I build to it, I have to be able, that's something that the community has to decide that they want or they don't, and that's where it's at.
And it goes at the speed that the federal government moves on these things, which is not exactly rapid.
But are you saying the federal government will take into consideration the request of the town?
If the town requests, yes.
If for, not to be.
I, I can't answer that question, I really have no idea. I know that they anticipate that there is a, that there's a westerly access, and they mandated it in two thousand and seven, when they took over the, the design and the, and the approvals for the project.
So why are you taking out W two twelve with the four A West then, if you know it's coming down?
It's not coming down soon, and it's complicating the application.
It's gonna.
It's complicating the application, but I want people in the area to realize what's gonna be coming down on Hovey Road. If we don't put these pictures in and four A is gonna be coming, we're shortchanging the people in the Hovey Road area.
There'll be a whole new planning board process.
Yeah, there'll be a whole, a whole other process like this.
I know, but it looks like one oh two is going in right next to Hovey Road, and that isn't to the benefit of the people who live there. You've got a cemetery, you've got an older area there, and you're putting in, posing, up to this point, a lot of commercial retail businesses there. And so if we take this out of the, the equation, you know, but it's coming.
Well, it'd always be added as a footnote.
That's what I'm saying, I think that there could be a footnote on the plan that says, in the future, four A may go west. If it goes west, the, the developer will come back before the planning board for an amendment to the master plan. That would include whatever it might include. And that would allow people to be aware, Anne, but you can't say that this is gonna happen if there's no indication that it is.
I know, but I'm looking at his list.
That thing is just gonna be thrown away. I'm sorry, guys, that greenen thing is gone. It's not as, it's not as accurate as your, as your verbal descriptions.
Yeah, the verbal description is what, what counts.
Well, the staff will also.
The verbal description with four A.
The staff will also be putting together a list of permitted uses, just like you do for a, any of the other, what, what zones that we've done. So we'll have a very detailed list that, you can look at examples that Tim's put together before, that has a very detailed list of what's permitted in that area, what's conditional, what's permitted, correct?
That's all part of the.
With definitions of what each of those things mean, too.
It's all part of what still needs to be developed, yes.
Right, right, but I mean, so that we are sure that we're all talking about the same thing when we say fast food restaurant.
And we'll be working with the staff in that regard, so that we can narrow the focus down for the planning.
So some things might be actually outright permitted, and some things may be conditionally permitted. The, the Board then, when they come with a site plan, we have to conditionally approve.
Right.
I know, but again, hospital's still there in, in these plans. What I'm saying is, let's be real, it may be coming down the. What I'm saying is, let's be real, it may be coming down the pike, so let's not wipe this off the boards, because...
I mean, I think what, as, as I said, Mary said, you know, will be a footnote in the master plan. And for it to become reality, it'll have to go as, through a public hearing and everything, as an amendment, you know, to the master plan.
And I understand what Ian's trying to say, though. She's trying to say, let's not, let's not say that Home Depot isn't gonna be built, you know what I'm saying? When I was moving into my, into my neighborhood.
Yeah.
Let's not say that Home Depot's not gonna be built, because in fact, you know, that was a possibility, it was gonna be built. Let's let people know when they do their due diligence to buy their house, that perhaps down the road, there could be an exit from Foray, okay? So it would be a footnote on the master plan.
And what they had envisioned for that area if Foray goes in.
I don't know if there'll be a picture, Ian, but there certainly will be a listing of what things could possibly go in.
This was in the last, last planning board meeting.
But these are just conceptual discussions. This is not anything that's set in stone.
It isn't real.
This is all concepts.
Well...
Can all be thrown away today. That's all thrown away today, too.
Right. But it's listed as used.
Well, you know what I mean, Mary. Of course, recycle.
Yeah, recycle, but this, this is what we're going by right here.
Right, and it says it in there, too. It just says they have to come back to you.
Yes, yeah.
But we're talking today like it's, you know, it's, we're wiping Foray off, Foray West.
Short term, yes, long, longer term.
Right, but it's gonna, it's gonna be there.
But you're probably looking out, I'd say, probably ten years from now.
Right, but I'll still be in my home.
Okay.
But I think what they're saying, what this...
And Foray is gonna considerably impact hubby road going north, too.
No, but I think, Ian, what they're saying to, what they're saying to us is that by the time they file their application, they're not gonna know, so they're assuming it will be residential.
Part of this will be built out and...
Right. And if it, if exit Foray comes in after the, this plan is approved, they would have to come back and ask for changes if they decide they wanna make changes.
Correct.
To make it go commercial. Right now, they're assuming it's going to be residential. Am I right?
Correct.
But all the while, they know exit Foray West is going in.
I think they hope.
Yeah, they probably hope, but no, safely say at this point, we don't really know.
Mr. Chairman, I have a message.
Yeah, Andre, and I'll get you, John.
No, no, and to your point regarding exit Foray West, and, and the only, the only qualification I would say against the mandate is that I think at one time, the exit Foray West was precluded from happening, because again, there was a retention of the orchard land that was felt strongly of the Lunandary at the time, but then later on, I think it was in nineteen ninety-seven, there was a, I guess a legislative act created that they wouldn't be precluded from going west, long as they followed the, the FIS process. And, and when I say the FEIS process, it's, that is the same process that we use for the east side, and that started in nineteen eighty-five, and we're not done yet. Matter of fact, we're going through our third iteration of the impact, the environmental impact statement. I don't, in ten years, if that happens in ten years, then I would be sorely amazed. I mean, there's, there's so much work involved, and we don't even know if the, if they were to start the FEIS on the western side, we don't know if that's gonna be the location there. They have to look at everything. There were so many alternate routes on the east side that we looked at, I'm pretty sure you would know a world, that, that it slowly got narrowed down to that location, and now that's what we're doing, the supplemental environmental impact report for, for that location. And if the west side were to be looked at, again, here we are almost thirty years later on the, on the east side, I suspect that it's gonna be almost equally as long on the west side, because there's so many factors that have to be considered. It's not just for, that westerly, exit Foray westerly won't be just for this project, it would be for the whole town of Lunandary, for the whole east, west side of, of the region.
Right, but I'm just saying, your Foray West is going through a residential area, an existing residential area, so I hope you're, I hope you keep in mind what I feel should be a reduced amount of commercial and retail space in that area. And also, to make sure that all areas of the plan, including the two twelve, two eleven area, do, do have boundaries that are the same as the existing homes in that area, because I, I see things on the plan in two eleven that are not on the backside of it. So the house is on trolley car lane. There's one, a house with the twenty acres right there, and they're, they're not one acre lots budding up next to it. And I wanna make sure that the houses on hubby and any yards that are bumping up into two twelve, they do have single families that are one acre, if they're budding against one acre.
We did talk about having that in the narrative.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's in the narrative.
Also, since we're talking about the apple orchards on Gilchrist, there are apple orchards on hubby also. Is there any chance of leaving a couple of rows of trees on hubby?
I think it would be good, I mean, even, even that stretch of hubby road is nice when you see those rows of apple trees, especially when the apple blossoms are out.
We'll take a look at it.
Okay.
We'll get back to you on it.
And also, especially around the cemetery, so it'd be a little more peaceful.
Rural, yeah, peaceful.
Right in that, that area.
Which, which we've commended to.
Yes. But I'm gonna take a look at, keep that rural apple look about it.
Thank you.
Town hallmark. Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I have a...
Okay, oh, John, I forgot about you.
Based on the conversation. So considering what I just heard about Foray, how are you gonna go about your planning as far as planning your roads and so forth, if you're, you're gonna go about starting development, starting your next phase of planning without Foray, you still have to consider your road system, and what are you gonna do about that?
There's a lot to do south of Pillsbury, and there's a lot to do east of ninety-three. Those'll be earlier phases than...
So let's say we're ten, we're ten years out, and we, unless someone has a crystal ball that we don't know about, the potential from what I heard is ten plus years to, to get a, an op-remp there. So you're, you're looking at, from a development standpoint, either one stagnating or over, overdeveloping your road system and planning for an accessway that may or may not exist.
Well, that's not necessarily the case. You could, you can always have enough capacity under the ground to handle almost anything if you plan for it. And your roads, you could plan, you could have a two-lane road, but have the width for a four, and, you know, later on. That's, that's, those are, those are just things that you do. I would do that anyway, regardless, because I think that someday there will be a Foray, and it'll be in my lifetime.
I agree.
And so I'd be crazy not to plan for it.
So from a, from a planning perspective, and I think we talked about this a little bit at the, the meeting that I was at, when you start talking about access, currently the access for Foray accommodates this property and this property only. And there's, and I asked the question about, I asked the question about the access that would allow, say, access to Foray for the rest of the town, and how do we go about that planning, and even, even though we're considering that Foray may or may not be there?
You know, that all takes place in the FEIS. That's what the federal government's gonna mandate, is, is that the westerly, all the way to probably town center, be looked at and addressed, and how that corridor would work, and how the various corridors would work. It's not just one, I would say there probably would be two or three. And, and that FEIS would take into consideration all those aspects of it. It wouldn't be just for this project, it'd be for the entire community, because that's what's affected by it.
So, so from a planning perspective, time-wise, timing-wise, right, I'm hearing ten, ten years? FEIS, right?
I keep on hearing the ten years, I, I just wanted to qualify that, that, it's gonna even take a while just to get it started. I mean, the, the environmental impact statement, I don't know what needs to precede that.
There's a whole, host of things that have to take place.
But once we get into the environmental impact statement, it's, it's a...
It's a monumental...
It is, and that's why I'm asking the question, because...
Monumental, and when you say planning for it, the federal government's gonna mandate what that is, and as a private developer, I can't even propose it to the, to the federal government. That's a regional, that's a regional impact, and that's, that has to be addressed by the state and the local, and the locality.
So my, my, my question to you is, there's a point where you're gonna say, hey, I gotta go, because I gotta make money on this property, and let's say the, 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 the Foray project hasn't even started, or isn't even close to being ready to go. What do you do?
Build it residentially.
And just go.
That's it.
And is FEIS...
You're not left with a choice at that time, are you?
Okay, Lynn has a question.
Can you ask what FEIS means?
Environmental impact study is the EIS. But Andre, in your experience, if the town came out against Foray West, you know, would the government push ahead? I mean, I can see, you know, Mike perhaps benefiting from the development, but you know, it's, like you said, it impacts the whole town, so the whole town's gonna have a say in that, I would think.
It would, I mean, it would, and whether or not it rises to the level of, of a decision that goes beyond just Lunandary, I don't know. Because if, if the need is there, and, and the, and the federal government and the state government felt that it, it would be a, Foray Wesley best serves not just Lunandary, but Nashua and Hudson and the whole region beyond us, then despite our projections, they might, they probably, they could, you know, have the authority to still approve it. And I'm saying it will, I'm just saying that it goes beyond just a local decision, it's a federal and state's decision.
The implications of that, just, you know, extending Chino Road or the development happening on the east side, and what has to be done.
Easiest, easiest way to put it is any, any, any highway access is a regional impact, not just necessarily the town itself, it is a regional impact.
The decisions, even, even with the, what's been done of Foray so far, has really been the state and the, you know, federal government.
Yeah, and we had some say as to...
Absolutely, the two towns had a lot to say with it in the beginning.
Yeah, but now it's...
Tremendous input. It was a town, town-sponsored project, still is actually, on the books.
Yes.
Very much so.
Any other questions? Oh, oh, okay, Joe Green.
Joe Green, twenty-five Mammoth Road.
I just wanted to clarify for everybody, maybe this is a question for staff, when this master plan is signed off, okay, and I know that we start construction and site plans are, are in the midst, Foray comes up, do they have to go back and do a complete new master plan, or is it an amendment to the master plan?
They would have the option of either amending the existing master plan or proposing to eliminate portion, it's really up to them as to how they approach it. My estimation would be that they would propose an amendment to the approved plan.
So none of these things, we don't have to come back on all the other sections, it's just that one specific area? And can you identify it as, for instance, in the amendment, can you identify it as that W-12, whatever it was?
However it ends up playing out, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Chuck?
Thanks, Chuck DeRossi, Old Dairy Road. Just a couple of comments, you and I have been here long enough, but my, I'm just going back on my recollection, I thought, there's a town, we wanted this, and didn't we pay like five million dollars already, and we're on the hook for more once it goes?
No.
Because it's something we wanted, we're on the hook for more.
Foray East.
Oh, but I mean, we wanted it, though.
Yeah, the town bought it for the five, five million.
I mean, that's five million, I hate to waste it, we wanted it, we should get it.
Oh, it's for east, east.
That's just for east.
Only east.
Oh, okay, all right. Also, the other quick question, if we leave all these orchard trees everywhere, are we gonna go in the apple business to maintain them after?
No, no, we're, the town's not gonna be in the apple business.
So whoever owns the house near there has to take care of it?
It'll, it'll be the entity that, that governs that, that area, so...
Okay, thank you.
But hopefully we can go pick some apples from there. Anything else on this? I know we have a series of questions, and actually going through this process of developing the master plan, it'll probably answer the more of them, most of them can't be answered till we get to the, we're actually at the site plan level, the level of detail that there are all these questions. We haven't forgotten them, but I think with the time, and we get three other agenda items to, to accomplish, so we will get, get to them anyway. But we'll also be meeting on the, be June eighth, isn't it?
June eighth would be the next...
The next session. It'll be conceptual discussion with Woodmont Orchards, it'll be first thing on the agenda for Wednesday, the eighth of June.
And what are, forgive me, Mr. Chairman, what are the action items for June eighth, then, for Woodmont to come to us on June eighth to do what?
Well, in the meantime, they'll be meeting with, with staff.
Yep.
And then they'll be presenting what changes we've recommended here, and probably taking the next step. So we'll have a presentation from the developer again, and staff also.
So at what point should we be able to expect some kind of go? Okay, give us something that we can work with.
Something formal.
It can give us.
I think at that point, it'd be up to staff to determine what has been put together, you know.
At this point, like I said, we've really focused purely on the land use issues. It's really gonna be a matter of how much the applicant wants to continue in the conceptual realm before actually submitting the application. Once he feels a comfort level in terms of the, the land uses and where, where his comfort level is in terms of submitting an application, we'll be prepared to review it whenever it's submitted.
So I guess our question for the board is, how much, how much time will we be entertaining them to continue to come up, so that it's best served for both their purposes as well as ours?
Do you mind if I interject?
No.
I, I take leave, Mr. Chairman, but I, I, I see us completing the task of everything that we discussed tonight, and bringing that to you and making a presentation. I also see us hitting traffic at our next discussion, at least preliminarily, at our next hearing, and then it's the questions of the physical writing of the, of the, of the zoning, and then my presentation to you formally. That's how I see it happening, and I, so that's, you know, sometime in the next couple of months.
Thank you.
Okay.
Andre?
And I think you might have touched on his art, but, you know, again, we do have some questions, and I think it's getting to a point where I think a lot of these questions are germane to the level and, the plan is that right now.
They're pretty much at the site plan level, most of them we really can't, because we don't know, we don't have the answer to it, so. This has been a very evolutionary process, and I think for some people it's probably been too long, but other people have felt that it's good, because it gets the discussion out there, it gets the community involved. I bumped into people who've been to the sessions at Woodmont on Thursday and, you know, evening and Saturday mornings, and they really are, you know, feel it's something very worthwhile.
Well, I, I see it in two, two levels, and then I'll, then I'll leave. It's, we've come, we've come to a point where we've done, where we're working through the first, the first master plan, the first PUD in your community. You'll have others, and they'll be coming sometime. But you're also setting a very fine example regionally, and for the state of New Hampshire, as to how a process like this would work, and there's a lot of communities watching what take, what's taking place here. And I know that for a fact, because we've been asked to come to communities and, and talk to them, and we keep saying, we're not ready to talk to you, because we gotta finish one first, so.
And the other thing this community has to remember is that approximately a thousand acres we have at the airport is in the Gateway Business District, and it's a very similar, it's almost identical to, to this. We'll be going through the same process with, with that. So it's gonna be a lot, a lot of activity, you know, over the next several years.
But you're, you're basically setting the precedent for how you're going to deal with it, with this project. So I think in that sense, you're gonna save a lot of time in the future. So that's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And we'll meet on the eighth of June.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes.
On the list of questions, is that something we need to present in this forum, or can the answers to those in this forum, or can they be released publicly with what we have right now?
It's up to the board, really. So it works.
I don't, I don't know how many answers there are, I know there's a lot of questions, but if we have answers that we could provide...
Frankly, I have not attempted to answer any of the questions that are directed to the board.
Okay, so, so we don't have answers to release, okay.
But do you mean as far as what we've discussed tonight?
No, no.
In terms of the, the list of the thirty-eight pages of PowerPoint questions.
Right.
Then it clogs up your email.
I saw, I saw a file up here.
I saw, I saw a file up here.
I had it ready in case, we got to it tonight, but.
Yeah, I think the, or.
So the.
I will be, I will be posting that updated, there were some updated questions that were added to that.
So should that, those questions for town staff or for the developer?
They're, they're a mix of developer-directed questions and planning board.
That should be an agenda item for next meeting.
They were.
We've got to go through those.
I would say that a lot of them are not answerable yet, because they're at a level we haven't reached.
Then, then we, we, that's our answer at that point, but we've got to go through them.
And can we just.
Agenda item.
Yep, yeah, what we do is, uh, put it second on the, uh, agenda for the eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
We don't know what's an acceptable answer at that point.
I haven't looked at the eighth yet. Tom?
Would, would it be useful if we gave the first part of the meeting to the, to the public to ask the questions and we just listened? I mean, or even to vote and?
Well, I think you want to focus where the discussion goes, otherwise you're going to be, it'll be all over the place.
Except that they're, they're waiting a long time, and they waited two and a half, almost three hours before they got the speak.
Yeah, I mean, they can speak first, uh.
Yeah, and then we can add into it. We'll hear what their concerns are.
Yeah, but, uh.
But if the answer to our, if some of the answers to their questions are, well, we're going to talk about that.
Or we can meet on a separate, separate night or something.
No, that's a good.
Yeah, or give them the, the opportunity to be with the developer, you know, while.
Well, I mean, they've, they've got plenty of, I mean, there's Thursday nights and Saturdays. But I notice, because I have people come to me that have had, you know, questions, and they said they get answered over there, so.
But those answers aren't televised. Nobody sees those answers.
Yeah, but people are getting, getting answers to them, so, you know. But, I mean, we probably could, I mean, if the board wants to do that, we, we can.
Or we can suggest that they become televised, that Thursday afternoon, or that Thursday.
They have, they won't, they can't do it for whatever reason.
Okay. Woodmont can't, or we can't?
I have no idea.
Well, I, I think we can pose it to LAC and see if they want to do it.
Yeah, see if they can go over there.
Right, I mean, we certainly have enough student volunteers that might be willing to go over and do it.
I mean, and they got the, the space over there, too, for, so, yeah, a lot of people want to come.
I mean, it just seems unfair that all these people are waiting here for hours, you know. Well, we ask our questions. I'm not saying ours aren't important, but, you know.
Yeah, because that's the thing, is if we didn't come, you know, I mean, what, what I should do is that allowing, you know, the board to speak, allow the public to speak.
Well, 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 frankly, it may have been more efficient if, if we just spoke tonight, and people could watch and listen. Then they come back with their questions at another night.
Yeah.
Because then they'd have, they'd have answers, they'd have, they could see it, they could replay it.
Well, we'll try to get the questions next, but in the meantime, we can think about how to, how to do it, you know, and. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we get to Chinburg Builders Incorporated.
Can you believe it, we're getting, can you?
It's tax map sixteen, lot thirty-eight. This is a continued public hearing for a fifty-one lot, phase one conservation subdivision and conditional use permit. And identify yourself for our records, please.
Yes, good evening. For the record, my name is Jonathan Ring from Jonesa Beach Engineers in Stratum. And with us tonight are Eric Chinburg and Dave Lozey from Chinburg Builders. We also have Jack McKenna, who is here with us from Hydroterra. We were here last, as you may remember, on April thirteenth, and since then, we have received two of our state permits, the wetlands permit and also the wastewater connection permit. We were asked to provide a hydrogeologic assessment report to review the use of onsite wells for the project. That report was prepared by Jack McKenna and submitted, and also, I believe, has been reviewed by StanTech. Items, do they have the report?
They don't have the report on them, no, they don't.
There are three items at the end of the report, which I'll just read into the record, and Jack can answer questions later on if you, if you have questions about it. Letter E is, and this is at the summary conclusions of his report. I'm sure Tim will tell us more about what StanTech had to say. Water budget analysis after complete buildout of the hundred and thirty-three homes at the subject property suggests an available water surplus of between two, uh, twenty-eight million and eighty million gallons per year that would remain. And what we did, even though the phase one is for fifty lots on the upper right-hand side, we did the hydrogeologic report for the complete proposed buildout, which is shown on sheet O V one of a hundred and thirty-three lots. The second, uh, point that I wanted to mention was groundwater within, so basically saying that there's an available water surplus of twenty-eight to eighty million gallons per year. Groundwater within the subject property is adequate to provide the.